Twenty-three meeting is officially called to order at eight thirty-one AM. We will start with our chaplain prayer and please, Jen's here to lead us in both. Please stand.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council and everyone. We greet you with love this morning in Jesus' name. Father, we bow before you realizing that you are the author and the finisher of our faith. We pray, God, that you endow our governing body with wisdom and knowledge and revelation to execute their offices with excellence as unto you. We thank you, Father, for our mayor, the Honorable Brenda Gunner. We thank you, Lord, for the members of the San Angelo City Council. We thank you for our city manager, Daniel Valenzuela, and all of the officers within the city government. We thank you for our police officers and for our firefighters and all first responders, our medical teams that are out there serving this community. This is the last council meeting of 2023. It's been a challenging year, Lord, but we thank you for your grace and your mercy. And we ask you, Lord, as this time of peace and goodwill toward all men is upon us, we ask you to stop the war in Israel and between Hamas and Gaza and that there will be a release of our hostages in that part of the country, the part of the world. We ask you, Father, to really, to stop the war between Russia and Ukraine. We pray, God, that, Lord, sickness and disease will be eliminated and that people will be set free by the power of your grace and your love. We pray, Father, for each and every one of our city employees, and we thank you for everything that you have done, are doing, and about to do. We honor you, Lord, and we give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
This morning, we will be treated to a wonderful performance by a gentleman who works at the lighthouse for the blind. He is going to perform a few songs for us to help us enjoy the holiday Merry Christmas spirit. So would Mr. Saldano please come forward? We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the deus, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. I'd like to start public comment today with a few comments from myself. Good morning, and once again Merry Christmas, and as this is the last meeting of the year, we wish you all one of the best New Years in 2024. As we look ahead to the holidays and the new year, I want to reflect back on the year and the many blessings that, as mayor, I think made this the incredible community that it is. First, of course, we are blessed because you, our citizens, choose to call San Angelo home. Thank you for what you do to make this community great. Thank you for investing time, money, and volunteering. You make this city the great city that it is. It is always about the people. Second, we are blessed to have the strong business community that make up our economy. Thank you for investing in our community and providing jobs and services that add to the quality of life and keep our economy strong. We depend on a strong economy to keep this city moving forward. Job security is so important to the quality of life. Third, we are blessed because we have a strong base of church and religious options. Citizens have choices, and they have a place to join in and without fear, celebrate their religious beliefs. Fourth, we are blessed because of the incredible nonprofit community. San Angelo is home to more nonprofit organizations than other cities our size. We are blessed with the many nonprofit and churches who work hard every year to help those in need and add to the cultural experience in San Angelo. We know the holidays can bring loneliness and stress. You need to know there are churches and organizations willing and ready to help you in a time of need. Please reach out if you or someone you know needs help. One phone call can make a difference. Opening one door can help change a life. Call Bob Solis at six five five oh eight two four or L or email bob@robert dot solis s a l a s at c o s a t x dot u s. And fifth, we are blessed with our first responders, city staff and employees. They work hard every day to address the needs of citizens and issues that arise with everyday living, from safety issues to street and water issues to animal control issues. These are often thankless jobs, but I feel so blessed, so thankful we have the quality of people who too call San Angelo home and are willing to serve to add to the quality of life for all of us. There truly is no place like San Angelo. I wish you all a wonderful holiday filled with faith, family, and friends. Merry Christmas, and may we all celebrate the end of this year and a new beginning in the new year 2024. Thank you. Merry Christmas. Are there other people in the audience today who would like to offer public comment? If so, if so, please come forward.
My name is Jackie Chestnut. I have JCR Engineering in Texas A. Theaters. I live in Knickerbocker, Texas, and I'm not sure what district or what y'all call Knickerbocker.
It's in the county, it's not in the city.
Yes, ma'am, and so, and that leads to my first question, and these are kind of serious questions for the end of the year, but I need to, as we move into 2024, 2023 for me, myself, has been one of the most trying years of my life, and I have some questions as we move into this next year for the city council. Knickerbocker has been a, it's an unincorporated town, lived there for 25 years, own a ranch out there, and as the city moves to that area, and we get county facility, you know, representation for some stuff, but are y'all, is that area, as we move, Cristoval is moving toward us, is that part of the plan for incorporating the city of San Angelo, Dove Creek, and all that? Because we went through all the water issues with you guys and all that stuff, and so that's just a question for me, myself, because the forty-two-inch gas pipeline is coming in about half a mile from my house, the Matterhorn Gas Line, and then we got the interstate going in over here on the other side of my place, and I'm just, is that a part of the plan? Do y'all have a plan? Because again, I've been in planning and zoning and all that stuff, in that area, as I see that.
Daniel, would you like to answer that?
So yes, Mayor, we do have that master plan, and as far as incorporating and moving out, the, our plan is limited by the, as far as annexation is limited right now as by, as far as the laws that are in place that require now for the ownership of the owners of that area of the property to actually request annexation into the city itself. In the past, we used to actually, we actually could move out there, but again, in our, right now, we're actually quite limited on that part of it.
Having lived and grown up in Austin and Round Rock, Leander, and all these areas, and Lake Travis, where we, I lived through this of the, of the Austin coming out, and it's, and I know our, our little Knickerbocker is not technically incorporated at this point. So that's my question, is, and as I look at a manufacturing facility or different things and looking at the future of what's going to happen out there, so I ask that question.
We have jurisdiction within the ETJ surrounding the city, so that's about as far as our guidance can go. Knickerbocker and Cristoval are way, way out of that area of jurisdiction.
Okay, very good. They've been way, way for a long time, but we're getting closer, as I, but like I said, 25 years and I've watched this, I'm just checking.
By state law, we have no.
Okay.
The county has the rules in those areas.
Right, and so the county, okay, very good on that, and so those are going to be the county commissioners and people like that having to do with roads and things of that nature. Okay, and then my next question is, as we look into the 2024 budget of the city of San Angelo, and having lived here for 35 years and as an engineer and doing facilities and things, when I look at the city budget, I see that for the city, we have, I think, point three percent allotted for facilities and engineering and maintenance in this facility, if I'm reading it correctly, I don't know if y'all can pull that up, but I have some serious questions because I have seen the, the city facilities and, and they're in a mess, particularly our sewers and our water, and I've seen this in facilities I've worked in, because I've worked in major facilities, where things that go to crap, and that's what's happened, and we don't have the money now to get things back in place, and as a person who receives those services and pays for those services, my question is, how's that going to be managed? And as I listened yesterday to the planning commission, where we're adding lots of subdivisions and we're adding lots of multifamily dwellings and things in different areas, they're going to require, they're going to impact those facilities long term.
Jackie, your three minutes is up, so I would ask city staff to follow up with Jackie.
Can y'all follow up? Can I just, so for me personally, because I'd like to, yeah, if we could do on that, and then the third thing as I'm working on is ADA compliance?
You're out of time, yes.
Okay, and in the future, can I have three minutes per question, or do y'all limit me to three minutes, period?
It's three minutes, and we can direct you to individuals in the city staff to address your issues, and we will limit your comments to the issues you choose to address, and then we will follow up.
Those are the three issues, and so, very good, those are the three issues, as we move into 2024, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Hello, I'm Shannon Stanford, I'm with ADAC. My concern is that we have a lot of vape shops near a lot of children's centers, and our middle schools are starting to, middle school students are starting to use vapes, and a lot of these vapes have quite a bit of substances that we don't want our children to have, and so my concern is what we're doing about that and what can we do about that.
It's a valid concern, and what I will say to you is we will work with the city attorney to determine if there is anything that can be done, if there's any restrictions in terms of amount of feet around the school district, if we can limit that, but today, we don't have an answer for your question, but I think it's a relevant issue, and we appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda, consent agenda. I will ask each city council member if there's an item they would like to pull for further discussion. I'll start with Larry. E and F, Karen? Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items E and F? So moved by Karen?
Seconded.
Seconded by Tom. Any public comment concerning the consent agenda items with the exception of E and F? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item E, second reading of an ordinance annexing into the city of San Angelo by petition of the property owner an unaddressed 31.356 acre tract out of the A, B, and M survey number three, abstract number twenty-four, and B, S, and F survey number five, abstract number one oh one, Tom Green County, Texas, located northwest of Arden Road and FM twenty-two eighty-eight. Aaron, you're on, and Larry, questions or comments?
Yeah, as you know, you talked about a minor collector north-south on there. There's two pieces of property between that area and Arden Road, which, you know, temporarily blocked doing that. I wondered if there was other options on that.
Well, currently, again, Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services, currently, the development is limited in size based on one entrance and one exit, and I know that's your concern of, of Boski Drive just being one way in and one way out. There is a minor collector that shows north-south, but as we've had pre-development meetings and as they have annexed or working through the annexation rezoning and the planning process, they are aware that when they hit the threshold, and talking with our fire marshal, that that threshold is 275 homes, they will have to have a secondary egress out of that neighborhood for emergency purposes. Obviously, that is an area on the edge of our town where wildfires are a danger at times, and so we want to make those neighborhoods safe, but there is options to do an east-west road back to FM twenty-two eighty-eight for the northern part of that neighborhood that would allow for circulation, and so they are aware of that and are anticipating that if their, their homes build out so fast that they need to add that secondary egress.
We talked yesterday about RS1, that's totally RS1, is that correct?
That is correct. It is RS1, they are not doing any ranch and estate, which is a minimum of one acre, so everything is going to be in the RS1-sized lot. There's no RS2 adjacent to FM twenty-two eighty-eight. In previous years, they have rezoned some area and annexed some area that might be small-use commercial, so more neighborhood commercial and general commercial, but that neighborhood is going to be single-family homes.
Finally, city water and sewage, would you discuss it?
Yes, so through the plat process, there will be a water extension required. There is water along FM twenty-two eighty-eight currently. They will have to bring that out into the neighborhood to service those lots. There is sewer that stops right about Arden Road and FM twenty-two eighty-eight, and they anticipate bringing that out and servicing those lots that are smaller than a half acre, as that's the trigger for TCEQ for septic system, and so anything that's smaller than that, they will have to be on city sewer system.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Aaron on this item? Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion, may I have a second? Seconded by Tommy, public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving item E, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item F, which is a second reading of an ordinance for Z two-three dash oh eight to zone property in the single-family residential zoning district being 31.356 acres located northwest of the intersection of Arden Road and FM twenty-two eighty-eight. Are there additional questions on this?
No, ma'am, make a motion, we pass it.
I make a motion, a second? Seconded by Tommy, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will now move into our regular agenda. We'll start with comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Well, we've got a lot of people up here. The first item is considered a resolution of donation from Wall sophomore FCC LA students for items related to awareness, public education, and projects related to contamination at Lake Nazworthy. Can you first of all tell us what FCC LA stands for?
We can, and I'm going to let them go into that for you, Mayor. We're here before you with a pretty unique partnership for the city. These young ladies reached out to us about a project that they wanted to do out at Lake Nazworthy, and when I met with them, it really became clear that this was more than just a question-and-answer session, that this really could be an opportunity that benefits both the city and these young ladies back here, but I'm going to let them introduce themselves, talk about their organization and what their project is, and then we can answer any questions after that, so I'll turn it over to them.
Hi, my name is Ainsley Jameson.
Into the microphone, please.
Hi, my name is Ainsley Jameson.
I'm Ella Taylor.
And I'm Isabel De La Pena.
We are sophomore students at Wall High School, working through the organization FCC LA, which stands for Family, Career, Community Leaders of America. We designed a project called Nursing Nazworthy with a goal to sustain and better the quality of water in San Angelo's Lake Nazworthy.
FCC LA hosts an academic competition called Star Events, and the topic we chose for our competition is called Sustainability Challenge. Our goal in this category is to preserve and protect something impactful in our community, so we thought that this would be the perfect opportunity to help sustain Lake Nazworthy.
As people who use Lake Nazworthy for recreation, we started to question what kind of water we were swimming, boating, and fishing in, and et cetera. After research, we discovered that there are issues that can easily be solved by the spread of awareness and education. Throughout our project, we were highlighting key points that we think will be most impactful to our lake.
Our main points of concern are cross-contamination due to failure to clean boats between lakes, chemical runoff such as herbicides, insecticides, and pesticides from lawn maintenance, and litter that is constantly thrown in the lakes such as cans, wrappers, fishing lines, and lures from when people go boating.
Why are these things important? By educating our community and spreading awareness about these topics, we can help prevent and help sustain Lake Nazworthy with many of these things by protecting wildlife, protecting our lakes from other problems that might have, ensuring the lake is a great place to swim, relax, and spend time with family and friends, provide quality drinking water from the source, as well as a long-term solution to sustaining the beauty of our lake.
While we were brainstorming ideas on how to get into action, we decided that we were going to give a presentation to our bass club, we put up posters around San Angelo, and we created an Instagram account. All of these were spreading awareness and promoting sustainability.
In the future, we plan to set up signs around Lake Nazworthy's boat ramps informing boaters to keep waste out of the water, and set up trash bins for extra lines and lures that boaters might have once they get off the water so that they can be disposed of properly.
By partnering with the city of San Angelo, we could take this project to a whole new level. Not only would be able to install, design, and build our own waste bins and signs, we would be able to educate the citizens and visitors of San Angelo, such as a digital billboard and a video on the city of San Angelo's YouTube page.
Our project has already reached around 1,300 people and will continue to reach more through future projects. Nursing Nazworthy will be spreading awareness, providing an education to our community about how to keep our waters clean, and provide long-term sustainability to our gem in West Texas.
Our partnership will excel. If we have a partnership with the city of San Angelo, our project can reach so many more people, and it is very important to us that we sustain our lake for future generations. Thank you so much for your time, and please let us know if you have questions.
Well, I love your passion, I love your idea, and I don't think there's anyone on this city council who would say you're not on the right path and keep on going. We love Lake Nazworthy, it offers a tremendous quality of life to our city, and you have mentioned many of the items that I think we've all been concerned about over the years, and we are here to support you and your effort. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say just a comment, Mayor. I just want to thank you, girls. It is so awesome to see the younger generation getting involved and wanting to keep the lake clean and beautiful. I appreciate all y'all's work, and I hope it's a success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and Harry?
This is a great opportunity for Keep San Angelo Beautiful to partner with another organization that wants to do something in San Angelo to keep this, this city green, so I applaud you. People at your particular stage of your life to step out and do something like this is amazing, so I know that, that any place that you live, once you graduate, you're going to try to do the same thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Lucy is a motion, I mean, Harry is the second. Lucy is a motion. I mean, Harry is the second. And any further public comment?
Mayor, I just want to say this is probably the best tag-team presentation I've seen in quite a long time, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And the vote is?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Keep us informed about the progress. We will now move into item B, which is overview and update on Angelo State University's current and future development of programs at Mathis Field Airport. And we have Dr. Donald Toplaw to present today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gunner, and I appreciate the opportunity to come forward to city council and to give you an update on what we're doing at the airport with our commercial aviation program. Want to talk a little bit about the history of it, and more importantly, where we are now and what we look for in the future. So if we look at the history of the program, it began in the fall of 2021. I projected to the Board of Regents and the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board that we'd have five students in the first cohort. I was a little bit under. We had 28 in the first cohort. In the fall of '22, we enrolled an additional 52 students into the program, and this past fall, 74 additional students. So we have a current total of 138 students in the program. We already, for next fall, have 80 students that have been admitted and are expecting to be in the program. So we will be over 200 in this coming fall. Our goal is to bring this program to somewhere between 250 and 300 students by the beginning of 2025. We couldn't do this without Skyline Aviation. Skyline Aviation is owned by ASU alums, and they have invested heavily in helping us with this program. If you're, you may or may not know, an FAA Part 141 certificate for the flight school is required for the students to be eligible to sit for an airline transport pilot rating after 1,000 hours. Without going through a Part 141 program, that requirement goes to 1,500 hours. So it's a huge difference in a student's ability to attain an airline transport pilot's rating. Skyline has been there from the very beginning, and they continue to be, and we'll talk a little more about their involvement here in a moment. So what do we look like for the future? Well, first of all, I want to let you know that it requires one aircraft for each seven students for this program. So with 200 students, if you divide that by seven, you come up with 28.57. It's a little difficult to fly .57 of an airplane. So we'll just round that up and say roughly 30 aircraft that are going to be required for this coming fall. Skyline currently has 20 aircraft with six more on order. They will get to 30 eventually, but we've had a little bit of a hiccup in that the Air Force has decided that they need all of the airplanes that are going to be produced by the Diamond Aircraft Corporation in 2024 or 2025. So we're going to be a little bit behind on getting aircraft for that, but we'll get there. So the total inventory cost of those airplanes, when we get to 30, is going to exceed $12 million. And obviously, that is a commitment to the community that is beyond what ASU could afford. And as I said, we could not do this without Skyline Aviation. So in addition to aircraft, it also takes a lot of instructor pilots. For those 200 students, it's going to require about 40 full-time equivalent pilot instructors at that point. Those are coming from all over the United States. We have pilots from Wisconsin, from Utah, from California, from Arizona, from other parts in the Midwest have actually relocated here to San Angelo because of this program. The other thing that is important to know is that as students matriculate through the program, when they get to 250 hours, and they have, at that point, have all the certificates, including a CFIII certified flight instructor instrument instructor rating, they will actually give back to the program, will hire them back into the program as instructor pilots. So that is going to be the way that we fill a portion of that need for those instructors. In addition to instructors, we have, will employ, and are in the process of hiring the third full-time classroom instructor for this program. And so as we move forward, that number is going to increase as well. So when we look at the community impact in terms of housing, food, fuel, and all the things that is associated with living in San Angelo, for those 200 students and 40 instructor pilots and three classroom instructors, that right now projects out to an excess of $5 million a year for the community. So it is a huge economic impact beyond just what Skyline Aviation is doing. So what is the impact on the airport of all this? Well, first of all, the number of operations is going up significantly. The airport director anticipates that in the coming year, we will have in excess of 38,000 operations in that year. We know for this fiscal year, we're already above 9,000 operations. So why is that important? Well, the FAA provides support to airports based on the number of operations that occur at that airport, and we'll talk more about what that means in the future. Skyline Aviation is, as you probably know, has leased the old GTE hangar, and they are in the process of putting a new fixed-base operation in that will be next to where we are building the next thing on the list, the ASU Aviation Training Facility. And I'll show you where that's going here in just a minute. In addition to that, we have been working with Howard College to, for them to start an airframe and power plant program. Obviously, with the number of aircraft that are going to be required for this program, it takes maintenance. And two or three maintenance people are not going to be sufficient for the fleet of airplanes that are going to be required for this program. So Howard College is in the process of working with Skyline to begin an airframe and power plant program, which will be an additional boon to the city. The other thing that is going to happen, we think, long-term, and it depends a little bit on some other things that happen at the airport, but should 927 be closed and turned into a taxiway, that will open up space for additional private hangars to be built at the airport. And we think that is a really important thing going forward. You may or may not be aware, but in this region of Texas, there is no hangar space for airplanes. The hangar space in Midland, there's a list about eight miles long to get a hangar in Midland. We're basically out of hangar space here in San Angelo, and so new hangars being built by private individuals is going to be a really, really important addition to the airport moving forward. So here is what the new aviation training facility is going to look like. This is just the layout of it. It's about a 15,000-square-foot facility. It is sized to handle 300 students. There are three classrooms in there, and obviously, you say, well, you can't put 300 students in three small classrooms. Well, we don't need to put them all in the classrooms at one time. So they'll be scattered out through the day, through the week, and that should be sufficient. You can see that in the top-left corner there, there are three simulators planned to go in there. And we have also designed this building that we can add to it as the program grows, if need be. So what does the future look like? Well, first of all, we are looking forward to becoming the number-one aviation program in the state of Texas. That is our goal. We are already well on our way to doing that. We are going to become an accredited aviation program, and in very short order, we are going to be graduating student pilots that are able to go into the commercial industry. They won't be able to sit for their airline transport rating yet, but they will be able to take on commercial aviation jobs, such as, one of the members of our Aviation Advisory Board has a company in Midland where they fly pipelines. And so he has indicated that he wants student pilots or pilots out of our program to come and work for him. In addition, our partnership with Southwest Airlines is really, really important in this. We have a number of students that have been accepted into Destination 225, and as they graduate from the program with 250 hours in CFIII, they will be placed by Southwest Airlines with some Part 135 carriers, which are things like NetJets, Wheels Up. Those are Part 135 operations that don't require students to have an ATP airline transport pilot rating. So they'll build hours with those, and then eventually, they will sit in the right seat of 737s at Southwest. And after about four years, two to four years, and they build hours as a first officer, they'll become captains at Southwest. And at that point, they will make a very nice salary. So we are looking forward to the future of Mathis Field. We think that this project is really going to kickstart the things at the airport. Yesterday, we received information that our building permit has been approved by the city. I think we're waiting on an engineering report, maybe. The FAA has also given its approval to this building, and our construction company, which is Hoare Construction, has indicated that they will put the fence up shortly after the first of the year. So we're looking forward to having an opportunity to turn dirt on that facility at the airport and make this a reality for ASU and for the city of San Angelo. Thank you for your time, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions or comments? Tom, you're my pilot.
Whoa.
You're on first.
We need to put you at the top of our priority list.
Exactly. I better just be a co-pilot, all right? I better be a co-pilot. I mean, it's outstanding to see what started. Okay, so ASU, the tie, the whole thing, we've been there, we get it, got a plane out there. I think we're thinking too small. I mean, I was out there when we had all the Canadian T6s in. There was, I don't know how many of them. We were trying to get in the pattern. We'd have to wait 20 minutes before they would just clear us up to get in the practice. I think we need to be looking for some alternative runway. I mean, are y'all doing that, looking for somewhere else that we can also?
So Jeremy has indicated that with the number of operations that we're going to have, that we will be able to ask the FAA for permission to put in a parallel runway. And that's one of the things that will happen with the number of operations, and I intended to mention that, and I apologize for not doing that. But you're exactly right. We are going to very quickly overwhelm the capacity of one runway, the north-south runway in particular. So, yes.
Cool. And I think that's right. But I mean, there's, and it's not mainly just here. I mean, can you move five miles away and put in, you know, basically, a non-towered field and something like that just to practice? I think those are all things, and those aren't a today answer, Don. I'm just saying, it's outstanding to see them. I'm in the air, and I can hear kids that went to school with my son, and I can hear her when she's on it, and they are outstanding. Their communications are great, they're doing their solos, they're just freshmen in college, and they're getting after it. So I was just saying, it's one of the most successful things I've ever seen come to San Angelo. I think we just need to spur it on, but it'll be an effort between what the city is, I suspect, say, what we can afford, what ASU can afford, and as we move forward, our only limits are going to be money, so private funding will be a lot to make this go.
I think it will singularly be the biggest economic development engine that we have seen in San Angelo, Texas. And we love the vision. We love the fact that this city council has made the airport a target asset for development. We did that with our master plan several years ago, and you all have invested and created an asset that absolutely will continue to develop that airport. And we thank you for that thought process, the idea, and the follow-through. This wasn't easy, and you're making it happen.
Yeah, and I will close by saying, we appreciate the commitment of this board and the planning council to help us to build this facility. It's like a lot of things, what we thought it was going to cost at the beginning has gone up exponentially. But we are, we have the money to build it. As I said, come right after the first of the year. The fence is going to go up, we're going to turn dirt, and we obviously are looking forward to an event where we can have everybody there to help us turn dirt and to get this project underway.
Right. Larry?
From what I'm hearing, you're talking about training people up through multi-engine jet, right?
So they will go through, they'll have, they will have a multi-engine certificate. It may not be a turbine certificate, because the multi-engine aircraft that Skyline is currently using is a DA42, which is a twin, diamond twin. So they may not have turbine experience when they graduate. But it's something we're looking at.
There's a rumor going around you're considering helicopter, too.
So actually, that's not a rumor. We actually, Skyline has purchased three Schweitzer helicopters, and so rotary wing will be an option for our student pilots.
This is really exciting. Tom, me?
One thing, I don't think you, when you were referencing some of your economic development impact, I know you mentioned the number of students, but some years back, I was sitting in a meeting where it was tossed out that a student had an economic impact of 40,000 to 45,000 at that time. So I'm assuming that would be the same today, if not more. So we've got another $10 million probably just from economic impact of the students themselves.
I have this habit of under-promising and over-delivering.
Good for you.
It's something that my father instilled in me a long time ago. And so that $5 million figure is based on taking those numbers and multiplying them by $20,000 per year, and that's for housing, food, fuel, those kinds of things. And that's an underestimation. You're exactly right, Tommy.
It's huge. We don't need to underestimate the economic impact of the student just alone, not to mention everything else. So kudos to you and to your leadership team, and we appreciate what you're doing out there. Thank you.
President Hawkins, would you like to come forward and add any comment? And what you might do is update
Come on up, Ronnie.
The city and the citizens on our basketball victories over the weekend, which were significant.
Now you know how I feel when she just turns over and says, "Do you have something to say?"
I guess, Mayor, and to the city council, I will tell you, from the perspective of what we're doing with the aviation program, one of the other areas that we will be doing, and it's not visionary, we will get it done, and that is with unmanned aircraft. And we will start that probably in a two-to-three-year period of time, if not sooner. I will tell you that both of the basketball teams have done very, very well. We envision them going to the championship. That's what they have set the goal to be. Both the teams and the coaches have set the goal that they want to be in the national championship. That takes a lot of effort. And they went to those different areas, even though they were in Hawaii and in Florida. Those were good competitive areas for them to set their goal to what it is that they want to do at that national level. But all of our athletic programs right now are looking for conference and national championships all the way through for the springtime. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeremy, would you like to come forward? You're in the audience, and as our manager of our airport, I look forward to hearing some comments from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeremy Valgartsen, Airport Director for the San Angelo Regional Airport. It's very exciting. It's fun to see. He said 38,000 operations. That's just for ASU. So when you tack on all our military and everything else, we're almost, we're really close to hitting 100,000 operations for this calendar year, which makes us a busy general aviation airport. So it's been very exciting. They're also at the forefront of flight training for an industry that needs pilots very bad. And the industry is growing. As you know, we've dropped down to three flights. We want to get back to our six flights with American and potentially get additional air carriers. So the only way we're going to do that is putting pilots into the pipeline. So it's exciting to see the program. It's fun listening to the radio, hearing the new students out there. But it's put us on the map with the FAA. I have conversations with them frequently, just on what's going on in San Angelo. And they want to come down here. They haven't been down since COVID, but they want to come see it because they keep hearing it. see it because they keep hearing it from me and they almost don't believe it. So I want to bring them down so they can see it. Hopefully, we'll see a lot more infrastructure and growth. And like you were saying, it's kind of spurring the pot. It's not just ASU, we're seeing a lot more business traffic come in. So we're becoming quite the little airport in San Angelo.
Can you talk about the taxiway to the hangars and the timeframe on that project?
Yeah, the South Taxi Land, again, we did not get any bidders. We put the project up for bid, we did not get any bidder. So we're kind of handcuffed, meeting FAA spec. It's a challenge with the contractors today that are very busy, that just, they don't want to meet the FAA's spec right now. So we're working with the FAA and TechDOT to come out with a state mix that's a little more affordable and something that the bidders, the local bidders at least, can achieve. So I don't have a good answer for you on that, Mayor. We're back to the drawing board.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments from council? All right, thank you very much. Item C, Consider Resolution of Support for the Historic Preservation and Rehabilitation of
We need public comment on that last item.
It was over you, an update, it wasn't a motion?
All items on the agenda are
Okay, so any public comment?
Yes, please.
Please.
First of all, I want to say, I love this, that we're doing this. And as a person that moved here in 1989 and first flew into the Mathis Field Airport to work for Johnson &amp; Johnson, has flown in and out of there over the years trying to get to New York and various places all over the country, that this is a facility that is one of our biggest impacts to this town and to business growing in this town because we cannot travel easily and transport easily because of our limited airport. So I love this, I have to limit it to three minutes, I know. And I do like this idea, and we are going to have to be adding a lot of facility demands on the city to add all these extra people and all these extra facilities. And what is y'all's backup plan for that? This is great, let's go build it, but how are y'all going to supply the water and the sewer and all the other things? Because that's y'all's job with our money. Next question is, do you have to be an ASU student to learn to fly? Because I want to join, I want to, and then how long does it take and how much does it cost? And do you have to be a student? And is there an age limit?
So I will answer that, and I will say you can do all those things you want to do.
Cool.
You can go out there and find your own instructor and do all those things after you pass some medical and get certified by the FAA.
Okay, but can you, is it through ASU?
This program is.
This program is through?
But you can become a pilot.
I'm talking about through this program. So this is limited to students only?
This is an ASU project.
Students, okay, very, okay, that's what I wanted to find out, so very good. And so, that's my main question, is facility backup for all these lovely people and businesses because we're the ones that are going to have to keep these places. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Okay, seeing none, we now will move on to item C, which is Consider Resolution of Support for the Historic Preservation and Rehabilitation of the Crestwood Terrace Apartments at 3130 West Beauregard Avenue as part of the 2024 Annual Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Affordable Housing Program for GC Crestwood Terrace LLC. And our presentation today is going to be done by Bob Solis and Ronnie Giovanni.
Well, good morning. Actually, we have Mr. Michael Beard, he's here on behalf of the multifamily developer, Gianni Capital, who happens to be out, like, I think they're expecting their third child, so he couldn't make it today. So Michael's here. They are proposing a rehabilitation of an existing 80-unit multifamily community in San Angelo called Crestwood Apartments, and it's located at 3130 Beauregard Avenue. And they are asking for a resolution of support for the project. And Michael, want to come up and do your presentation?
Morning, council members. Michael Beard, Betco Consulting. And as Bob said, Mr. Gianni can make it, he just had his third daughter, so they are, they have their hands full right now. But I believe you all are pretty familiar with the tax credit program, so I'm not going to really, the first few slides are kind of a backstory of what that is, but I'm going to go ahead and pass those and get into the meat and potatoes of kind of what we're proposing. It is an existing asset that the city has. It's an 80-unit apartment complex that was built in 1965. It needs rehabilitation. It has some deferred maintenance items. It can be brought up to full ADA standards, and what we're proposing will kind of meet a need of taking existing housing and quickly bringing it up to modernization, utilizing this program. Here's Mr. Gianni's kind of backstory and experience. His portfolio began in New York, but he has recently been acquiring and maintaining assets in Texas. Several properties are in Laredo now. So he's got some strip centers, retail centers, car washes. He just acquired back in, oh, when was it that he acquired this one? Well, it's an apartment complex in Laredo that he acquired and rehabilitated and updated, modernized, added energy efficiency, and increased the occupancy up to 97% when it was sitting at 65 before. You can see the pre-rehab photos here, and here's kind of what it looked like afterwards. Because of the competitive nature of this program, these proposals have to be highly amenitized, they have to be brought up to full ADA compliance. We would actually be adding ADA units. You have to have 5% that are mobility accessible, and then an additional 2% that are targeted towards hearing and visual impaired. Yeah, let me, let me go ahead and kind of, so yeah, he's done some medical centers as well. Freestanding ER, here's what we actually do, we're helping him with the actual program. I'm a CPA, this is Section 42 of the Internal Revenue Code, that's kind of how I got into this program. Here's pictures of the actual asset. I think it's 12 buildings, but don't quote me, but it's, all of them are these two-story garden-style walk-up design. 1965 is when it was placed in service. It does have some common amenities. Part of our, yeah, here's an article back in '63 when they were breaking ground on the development. So here's kind of what we're looking to do. We're looking to do LED Energy Star appliances, low-flow fixtures, obviously new flooring, plumbing appliances, updating all the fixtures, working on the exterior wherever there's deferred maintenance item needed, working on the pool. And, you know, really, it's going to be, once we get our PCNA, we're going to know exactly what all we need, but we're currently budgeting approximately $30,000 per door on the inside is kind of the budget. Obviously, this is an existing asset. It is pretty well occupied at, I believe, 85 or 87% right now. So I know there's been some concerns as to how we're going to handle that relocation as needed. And in general, we have budgeted $100,000 for relocation expenditures that might be needed with this type of scope. We feel pretty confident that the GC should be able to go into each unit and complete it within three to five days on the interior work. And with that, we're planning on taking the vacant units, rehabbing those first, and then kind of doing a rolling. And if we can't get the speed going, we can do a temporary onsite pod, put belongings in there and put them up in like an extended stay or something for the week while we can get those rolling rehabs going quicker. There would be zero out-of-pocket costs any associated with relocation. That's part of what's required of the program. There should not be a burden on them, and this all has to be vetted and agreed upon by the state agency. So just for y'all to know, this is kind of the income bands. So we've boxed out the 60% there. That's how much income per size household that the lion's share of these units are going to be targeted towards. And then those are the rents associated with the one and two bedrooms. So you can kind of see at 903 for the one and 1083 for the two, this is pretty close to market rate. It's, in fact, actually, our current model has a delta very similar to what the current project's operating at, which is, which is good. It means that more than likely, most of the current residents are already in this income band and should qualify. So we're expecting our rehab budget to be between 12 and 14 million. That's all in. Obviously, given proximity, we're going to try and bid out to local subs and contractors and suppliers as much as we can. During construction, about 100 to 150 jobs should be created, and then there should be at least two permanent full-time staff that will be required there, you know, leasing and maintenance and whatnot. I imagine we're going to have to apply for permits again for our scope of work, so that should generate some fees to the city. And then our proposal will obviously substantially rehabilitate an asset that's, you know, built in the '60s and could use a facelift. Love the proximity, it's literally right behind that HEB, so I wish I lived that close to HEB. This is why I'm here. We, as part of our application, we're going to be submitting a pre-apt TDHCA the first week of January. We'll know mid-January where we stand, how competitive we are, if there's a likelihood that this would happen. And a huge point item on that scoring criteria is to get support from the city, and that's why I'm here, to speak with you lovely people today. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Lucy?
I just wanted to ask you, I don't know if I missed it or not, but when would this project get started if approved?
So we are applying for 2024 tax credits. They award them in July of 2024. So once you get that award, you basically work towards securing your financing. Since this is already an existing asset, it's a little bit quicker timeline. And generally, if it was new construction, you'd have to place the development in service two years from award by the year end. We're expecting to close on this, actually, our site control only runs through the end of next year, so we have to close by the end of next year, and we would expect rehab of this magnitude to take about six to eight months, so we can potentially have this all done in 2025 is kind of what we're hoping.
I think that's a great idea. I'm sorry it has to take till 2025, but back in the '70s, I used to live at those apartments.
Yeah, you know, I drove by them this morning, and, I mean, they need, they need some TLC, you know? And we, we're excited about the opportunity. And we really hope, it's, we know it scores well, but this year, they've flatlined the scoring criteria to where it's going to come down to tiebreakers, and that's why we love this site, because one of the tiebreakers is proximity to a grocery store. And that, as you know, you know, that's
The other plus is the fact that you don't have to build, you know, you're just remodeling.
Right.
And the fact that it will make that side of town even look nicer with the apartments redone.
No, that's, you're exactly right. And, you know, we've been in this circle where costs go up and then costs stabilize and then interest rates go up. And so the TDHCA specifically put in a new point category for developments just like this that are not currently income-restricted, but to bring them into the program and propose a rehabilitation because they know that's as good a shot as any of them getting more units in the portfolio, because new construction's hard to do right now. It's just hard.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Tom?
So we're competing for a tax credit, correct?
This is, this is for 9%.
And this may be you and Bob that get to answer this.
Sure.
So what's the amount of the tax credit? I mean, to me, it looks like you're hinging everything on whether you get the tax credit or not.
Yeah, so the amount available, the projected amount available right now is 983,000 in annual allocation, and it's over a 10-year period, so basically 9.8 million in tax credits that we are asking for from the state. And this is in Region 12 Urban, so we're competing against the Midlands and the Odessa's and
So how does this credit get to you?
I'm glad you asked that question. So it's a tax credit, just like anything else, right? It's a dollar-for-dollar reduction on your tax liability. Well, as a developer, they're not going to have a $9.8 million tax liability, but banks do. And so what happens is you form a partnership where you usually have a CRA-driven bank that will buy the tax credits for approximately 83 to 85 cents on the dollar. And that investment is part of the capital stack that we utilize to do this sort of development and finance the rehabilitation. And that tax credit partnership goes until the credits burn off, which is at least 15 years, and then after that, the investor can leave and the general partner can maintain and own the asset.
So my question, in this area that you're soliciting for a tax credit, are we your only candidate? Are we the only property that you're promoting at this time?
We were really trying to get a couple other properties for this round, but we haven't been able to secure site control on those. We will be looking to come back next year. But this is the only, this is the only property that my client is putting in an application in 12 Urban. We'll have to see what our competition is, because there's a lot of tax credit developers out there.
It's, I'm with Lucy and everybody. We want to see these things go forward. We hate that it hinges on a tax credit.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, it's, that's the financing vehicle. It's got a great shot. We'll just have to see, once and again, we'll know what our competition is about mid-January. Y'all are going to be receiving notices as part of the requirement, so we're going to be mailing those out beginning of January formally, you know, basically saying this is what we're looking to do. And hopefully, it, you know, scores well enough to get the award. And if it does, I don't see any reason this isn't going to go forward.
All right.
If y'all want it, obviously.
Any further questions? May I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
Second.
A second by Lucy. Public comment? Public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question on this one particularly because we're looking at tax credits, which is my money. So I would have a question on, one, you're looking at $30,000 per apartment. Having done this for 45 years and just rebuilt my house from the ground up, I would question what $30,000 is going to do? Are you rebuilding the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing completely all the way down to the city point? No, so you're not rebuilding. So are you just going to freshen them up and make them look good? And that's all?
Please come forward to the microphone.
Are you just going to make them look good? Because if we don't replace the basic fundamentals, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, then we've got something that in 10 years is worthless, and the people living in it are paying electrical expenses and all kinds of other expenses that they wouldn't have if those things were done. So $30,000, that's my question.
That's just the GC fee or the GC contract? It's budgeted at $30,000?
Oh.
So that's not the total cost? The per-unit cost is much higher than that? That's just the actual construction contract?
And so, okay, are you replacing the mechanical, electrical plumbing?
We have not done a PCNA yet.
Okay.
Based off of the results of that, we'll, and a PCNA is a physical capital needs assessment.
Public comment should be comments, not questions, is that correct?
Should be comments, not questions, and comments to council.
Okay, can I comment to council?
Yes, you may comment. You may have conversations with him offline.
Okay, so these are questions that I think I want to just make a comment to. We need to look at that whole picture of it because we are creating a facility for, and I assume it's ADA compliant and all that, but the facility that's going to be in town that we're going to give tax credits on. And yes, you're right, construction right now and people to do the construction is a big, big problem. And so, and my next question is, is the city, when they redo all this, going to have plans for fixing all of our, again, sewers and stuff that supply this? Because they're all anxious as well. This is a 1965 facility. So those facilities, I assume, have not been replaced since then as well, the city facilities? So that's my question. If we're going to make it all nice, let's make it all the way to the beginning. Thank you.
Further public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of support for the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Support for the resolution passes 7-0. We'll now move into item D, which is Discussion and Acceptance of the 2023 City of San Angelo ADA Self-Assessment of Programs and Services. Teresa, you are on.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Teresa James. I'm the city attorney and the ADA coordinator for the City of San Angelo. You all have heard about this assessment since probably about April, when we started the process. I did give an hour-long presentation at a public hearing. I'll spare you the hour today, and we'll have an abbreviated version. But the longer program that goes into more detail, as well as the self-assessment report, are both available online with the City of San Angelo. The self-assessment report itself can be found at costa tx.us/ada. So the purpose of this assessment is to evaluate the current state of ADA accessibility compliance that relates to programs and services. We did not evaluate any physical structures during that, that's going to come later. This is a snapshot in time. The duration of this assessment, I sent out assessment documents on April 10th and asked to have them back on April 17th. So almost immediately, people started contacting me, asking how they could improve. And so this is a snapshot back. We are much further down the road than what this would show today. These assessment documents were provided These assessment documents were provided to all city employees who were in charge of a program and service of the city. I started by asking directors and managers to list the programs and services they provide directly to the public, there are multiple pages of that in the assessment report, and then whomever was responsible for that, that's who got assessment documents. And we are going to do a follow-up assessment that's going to take place in the spring to ensure that we continue moving forward, continue learning, and continue addressing any kind of holes in knowledge. So, we, the assessments were multiple documents that people had to complete, and these are the areas that were evaluated. It was very broad-based from the basic administrative requirements, we looked at not only webpages, but the website, we looked at ticketing, curb ramps, communications, various areas. When we get to the results, the basic administrative requirements that we assessed, we do have an ADA coordinator, that is myself, who was appointed in April, all of the information about my appointment was posted in compliance with the law. We do have a grievance policy since the 1990s, one of the things I'm going to task my ADA Advisory Committee to do is to review that and make sure, even though it's legally sufficient, it also makes sense. That we have public notice, it's the DOJ notice that they recommend is posted at all of the entrances of all of our buildings, and moving forward, we want to continue to find new ways to communicate with the public. The general nondiscrimination assessment was very broad-based, it talked about everything from service animals to mobility equipment to some communication questions, and what we found is that most of our employees have an understanding of the basic requirements of the ADA, but we did discover some areas that needed improvement. The number-one area that needed some improvement was training. We immediately jumped on that, and at this point, everybody from the city manager's office through frontline employees have received training on interacting with folks who have disabilities. We also identified that there's some internal processes to the city we need to work on and clarify, some of that we've already done through the policies you adopted that the ADA Advisory Board recommended. Decision-making authority and denial of accommodations needs to be clear, who has that authority and how that process works, and then again, communicating with the public on the accommodations we have. On the communication survey, this is really how we communicate with people, how do they get their points across to us if they need assistance? The general findings were most of our employees had only a basic understanding of the types of services that are offered by the city. So, generally, everybody knew that we could get one of the interpreters if we needed it, but beyond that, there wasn't a lot of knowledge. So, again, the improvements, the types of accommodations we can provide and how to request those, there are certain times when we can deny accommodations, where we've done some training, we'll continue to train on what those circumstances are. There was an indication that we have some phones that are available to the public, where it's not just, you can use my phone if you ask, but it's there for the use of the public. I'm not sure where those phones are located, so the first step is identifying them, but then making sure if we do have a phone available to the public, it is able to access the TTY services. And then what we're finding is the accommodations, particularly if we're using interpreters or CART, those are very expensive services, and right now, it's not a problem, we're able to manage that within the budgets we have, but if we start getting a lot of those requests, that we probably will be coming forward with some budget requirements or requests for you guys. Department webpages, these are the actual pages, this is not the website as a whole, and what we found when we did this assessment was that the people who maintain the pages weren't really clear on how to make, create or maintain an accessible website. Now, in their defense, these were very technical questions, it's not something you would expect Dahlia, who's my paralegal, to know how to do. So, the solution we've come up with is we're going to centralize more of that background work through Brian and Lorelei and with our website provider, and just provide training on the things that our employees can and should be doing to make sure their information is more accessible. We did evaluate emergency management, this is one area where I'm very confident that we meet the needs of people with disabilities. Many people don't know that during the winter storm, we had an apartment complex that housed elderly and folks with disabilities flood, and we had to move all of those folks, including their big heavy chairs and their equipment and their medical equipment, to this building, actually, and accommodate them here, and all of those folks were accommodated either here or in a hotel room where they were better accommodated. So, I'm confident that we do this, but going forward, some things that we should consider doing is including people with disabilities on some of our tabletop exercises to make sure that we're thinking of everything that needs to be thought of, checking the shelters when they're set up for accessibility issues, and then improving communication during emergencies. The system right here, and the fact that we now have easier access to interpreters, will make the communication aspect a lot easier. We evaluated our ticketing process, ticketing is something that's not mentioned in the ADA, but the Department of Justice views it as a program in service of a city to provide ticketing, and they have guidelines, and so, we took those guidelines and looked at our process and began working with our vendors. We do need to continue working with vendors to ensure adequate information is being provided about seats, so people can select a more appropriate seat, and finding ways to provide the appropriate amount of companion seating, those were the two main areas that we're of concern, that are still outstanding. Curb ramps, two employees answered this survey, and at the time, there was a little bit of confusion on whether we had a curb program, who qualified, and what the effect was. Since that time, and actually, on the consent agenda today, you approved money for a curb ramp program, and we do appreciate that very much. We've already, Patrick and I, talked to a business downtown to see if we can utilize some of that funds to make that particular portion of downtown a little more accessible for them. We also need to make sure that as we're developing projects, in the, when they're in the development phase, we start seeking input from folks. I think we learned that lesson on the ramp, we did have public input, but the ship had sailed way down the river by the time they got that input, and so, there wasn't a lot that we could change at that point in time. So, making sure people get input a little bit earlier is going to be necessary. On the website, which is different than the webpages, we actually have four websites affiliated with the City of San Angelo, there's our city site, Fort Concho has one, the San Angelo Police Department has one, and the Development Corporation has one. The only one that has any kind of compliance for accessibility right now is the City of San Angelo website. It's pretty expensive, and you have to have a pretty low, high level of knowledge to make those websites accessible, particularly if they were created, like ours was created in 2014, when accessibility of a website wasn't even a thing. So, our action steps is we're going to continue using Silk Tide on our own personal website, the City of San Angelo website, but we do know that there's some things that our website just will not do that are required by those standards. So, at some point in time in the future, we're going to be coming back to ask to upgrade the website we have to be able to do everything we need to do to make it accessible. External department websites should be given pages which in the city webs, within the city website, so that particularly is, Fort Concho and the police department, we'll be having conversations with them for moving off their own hosted website onto a webpage of the city. That is something that's budgeted, so the city is paying for, at least the police department's website as well, but they either need to do a better job of making that accessible, or they need to come under the umbrella and let Brian and Lorelei help them with that. And then gaining input of accessibility of the website should be sought with citizens who actually use it. You know, a lot of people see that little accessibility button that is on websites. People with disabilities really don't like that button, it actually makes it worse for screenwriters, Brian and I talked to a lot of people about that, there are a couple people who say they're good, those are mostly people who are well-sighted, and so, they just need a little bit font to be a little bit bigger, but anybody who relies on a screen reader does not, they do not like those particular buttons. And so, we're looking at ways to accommodate them without just sticking that button on there. I'm getting contacted by a lot of vendors who want to sell us a button, but we're not biting on that yet, so. And our progress, you know, that was then, we've made a lot of progress since then. First of all, we created that ADA Advisory Board, which is very helpful, they've approved policies, they've reviewed and provided comment on this self-assessment report. When you read it, there is a section in there that is their evaluation of the assessment. They did a walkthrough on this council chamber when we were doing these screens to make sure that we weren't missing something on where they should be. As I said, we've trained all our frontline employees, city administration directors, assistant directors and managers, with the exception of few who are absent, but we'll catch them. We added comments box to our website, you know, we had the grievance policy, and people were commenting that, I think Sharon Troy, actually, who's right here and was pretty helpful in doing this whole assessment, commented that people aren't, they see the word grievance as being angry, and a lot of people just want to provide information. So, Brian very quickly put up a comment box where you can just provide us a comment or a suggestion, if you're not wanting to file a grievance to get us to do something, but just have an idea, that's where you can do that. We also added some consideration for ADA improvements to some of our funding sources, such as the tiers program. All of our streets projects that we've done since April, we've ensured have been ADA compliant. Patrick and Shane, they did provide a presentation to the ADA Advisory Board about some of those projects and the upcoming projects. We did upgrade this, this room, as you can see. There are large print documents available at public meetings, if you go to the back, you'll see one that has much larger print, it's much easier for everybody to read. We do have an agreement with a company that provides CART, which is if I'm having a meeting with you and you're not able to hear me, I can pull this third person into the conversation, they can type, and you can see what they're typing on your phone. So, it works. FaceTime also does that. I have a mother who's hearing impaired, and I'm telling everybody about this, Facebook now has captioning, and I've had the best conversations with my mom I've had in like decades because of that, so. If you need to know how to do that, I'll show you how to put that on, because it is life-changing for some people. Closed captioning on all program broadcasts on Channel 17, excluding videos with music. Some of us were laughing at the screens when we were playing the music this morning, because it was like putting text up there, and it didn't really make sense, but Fannie Mae is somehow involved in the saxophone, so. Made tremendous progress on city website accessibility with more to come. We are communicating better with the community in general and with some of our partners. We amended our ticketing contract to require vendors to comply with the DOJ standards, I was a little bit shocked they didn't already, but they didn't, so that is something we've done. One of the concert promoters that we work with a lot, he has really worked hard to find ways to have more accessible seating at events, particularly in the River Stage, and then we are planning those modifications to the River Stage that'll make that venue much more accessible. We have provided information about the state database for emergency evacuations, that was one of the concerns people had for us, where the state of Texas maintains that database, and our emergency management folks can access that during an emergency to see where people are located. We have provided more information about our facilities and programs that are accessible to citizens through work on our website and our webpage, and we are collaborating much better with other public entities with some open lines of communication that weren't there before. Silk Tide, the one thing that Daniel did just a couple weeks ago, I've been kind of wanting him to do this for a while, and I finally got up the nerve to ask him, and he said yes, is important, which he didn't resist at all, was appointing an internal ADA committee, so when a question comes to the city, we have people who are more knowledgeable about the ADA and the requirements in all aspects of the city. So, myself, Al Torres, who will look at facilities, he's been pretty instrumental in the River Stage project, Patrick, who will be the street sidewalks, where curb ramps guy, and Veronica, who's the Title I ADA person, Title I deals with employment, so those issues are a concern, they're just not so much of a concern to the public, but they are a concern to us. One of our members, we have a couple of members on our committee who are ADA, ASU faculty, one of them has a committee of students, of honor students at ASU who are developing a community survey that they will put out on the street, hopefully in the spring, so we can get more input. You know, there is concern that when we ask, people don't want to tell us, because there's this fear, hopefully, a group of students from ASU doing our project will be a little more accommodating to folks. And then what's next? Follow-up assessment in the spring, as I said, that, that survey that's going to be going out to the public, and then the ADA Transition Plan Update, this is something we've been trying to get on board for, since 2018, I think, is when it first became an issue on my radar, and so, we have worked through the scope on that, we'll be coming to you sometime in the near future for some funding mechanism for that. Do want to say, we did get a quote for this earlier, before we did our self-assessment ourselves, and the quote was like $800,000, and we shaved $300,000 off that quote by doing this portion of the assessment ourselves, so I'm very proud of that, and I think it also gives us the opportunity to have a better product, because we're all personally invested, it's not somebody from the outside who's coming in and telling us what to do, we're all kind of working through it together. And with that, I will take any questions.
Questions for Teresa? Or comments, Lucy?
Teresa, do you have any kind of, you didn't mention it, any kind of Spanish-speaking brochures or anything for people that do not speak English?
We, like, I don't know if the interpreter, the thing about sign language is it's own language, so somebody who speaks Spanish and somebody who speaks English, if they're signing, they're speaking a third language. So, for interpreters, that doesn't matter, it's a whole different thing. There are dialects of the sign interpreting, we do have folks on staff, my paralegal Dahlia is for one, for instance, who does create Spanish documents for people who are Spanish-speaking, and there's a number of people in the city who are interpreters for Spanish, and if somebody calls up with a question, we generally know who to direct them to, so they can have a communication.
I just didn't know if these people that are disabled, that are Spanish-speaking people, had any information on what the city is providing.
That's really a great idea, I hadn't thought of that, so that's helpful, we can put some information out there in Spanish specifically.
Thank you, Teresa. Other comments?
I've got one.
Yes, Tom?
So, Teresa, as we go through this and assess this, there's certain, of people with disabilities, there's some that require hardware and some that don't. So, with these ticketing events, I've witnessed many places that are, have typically been reserved for people that have hardware needs-
Yes.
-that are in a wheelchair, lose their spots to people that didn't have hardware. But if you read the rules, they're allowed to buy one ticket and then two extra for companion passes, I mean, to me, there's, there's an abuse of the program there between where your companion pass sits in proximity to you versus those people that are required, so if you have six seats there, you're really only actually catching two people with hardware.
Right.
So, is there a way to address that to where it's a little bit more fair and consistent to those people that have hardware needs, to those that don't?
Yeah, it's really hard to assess that, like, we have to provide the same access to ticketing, and since we have an online ticketing system, we have to allow people to purchase even those accessible seats through the online ticketing. One of the things we're working on is putting, and this seems like not a great solution, but it's what the DOJ recommends, putting an assertion that people have to acknowledge that they or the person they're with does require that seat, and that would give us the opportunity to remove them from that seat if we see they're not, but at that point, it's too late, because the seat's already been sold and the person was already rejected. I will tell you that SEPAK is doing a great job accommodating people who are in wheelchairs and walkers right now. I went to the Nutcracker on Sunday, and there was a bus of people who came in that side door, and they were lined up, and their walkers were lined up the walls, and so, all of those front seats were taken by people who actually do need those seats. So, I think there's progress being made, but I have that same concern that you have about abuse of those seats.
Well, so what some of those people have actually done is look at buying a season ticket, I mean, the people that go to all those events buy a season ticket for them specifically, is a way to manage it, but I do see a lot of a gray area in that, to where it's, I'll just say it's gray, and you look at it, and it gets abused a lot.
Yeah, and I think there is a difference, and we've had this discussion a little bit at the committee level, of somebody who's in a wheelchair and somebody who has like the decal because they have other issues with mobility that don't require a wheelchair. And that is an ongoing conversation within the community of folks who have disabilities, on who should actually get the van spot and who shouldn't, and all of those sorts of things, but if you have any suggestions, or anybody has any thoughts or suggestions on how to accommodate that better, I'm certainly open to hearing them.
I'll leave that with our ADA compliance officer.
Okay.
I will nominate her for life.
Teresa, one of the biggest questions I get from people is the support animal situation, could you explain support animals, the rules and regulations attached to that?
Yeah, when it comes to access to facilities, housing is a little bit different, but it comes to access to a facility, there's really only two questions that you can ask people who have a service animal, and that's, you know, is that a service animal and what's it trained to do? You can't have them demonstrate what they do, you can't have them, you can't ask any questions about the disability, so if they're able to answer those two questions, then it's a service animal, and it's allowed to access any portion of a facility that anybody else is able to access. One of the questions comes up to me a lot about restaurants, the need for a service animal trumps health codes, so even though I couldn't bring my pet dog into a restaurant for health code reasons, I am able to bring a service dog. Now, you can remove a service animal if they are not trained well, I mean, not potty-trained, or if they are out of control, but even if you have the animal removed, you still need to provide some kind of service to the person.
Thank you. Other questions and comments for Teresa?
I want to call out Larry before he says anything, he's on my committee, and he does a great job.
I'm moving on, and then he raises his hand, so we're going to get him before then.
He and his wife are both very good and active members of our community and, and the ADA committee, and we appreciate all that you've done.
Well, I applaud you for this self-assessment, this was just an almost unimaginable labor that you went through to get this done. This was an awful lot of hard work, and it was extremely impressive.
Thank you.
So, do we need a motion to accept your ADA self-assessment program?
We do.
May I have a motion for approval of the self-assessment?
Second.
And second by, a motion by Tommy, second by Larry, we'll open it up for public comment.
Hi there again, Jackie Chestnut, and as a person who has been medically disabled since 1998, I've been through 18 surgeries, cervical cancer and many other things, and so I am, was for a long time in one of these things all the time, and had been in the wheelchairs and all that stuff. And now, thank God through that, I'm not in this full-time, but I live with this. So I have great compassion and understanding because I've lived this life. I want to volunteer to serve on this committee because I have great knowledge in this area. And then the other thing is, because we need to do this in our town. And the other thing is, our big focus initially apparently was on all things software and electronic, which are all lovely. And we've done very little focus on bricks and mortar except for a ramp and a chair. And apparently those didn't work very well. So I would like to address those. And then we have now allotted $275,000 apparently for this issue in 2024. Is that correct?
For curb?
For curbs and stuff. And then what other monies are allotted, because we've now spent a bunch of money doing a survey. So what other monies are allotted to make actual physical changes in things that need to be done, as I'm going through and doing my own survey. Thank you. And I really would like to do this because this is very important to me.
Yeah.
And to 20% of our population now.
I would like to address one thing that we didn't pay any outside person anything for the assessment. All of that was, came out of just my work and my time.
Well, that costs money.
So I would have been doing something else.
Maybe so.
So as far as the money's concerned, I, with Patrick and Shane, have been tracking much more closely what portion of our projects go towards those accessible elements that are required. So we don't have necessarily a dedicated fund for those kind of improvements, but they are a portion of all of our streets funds or projects that we're doing right now. The transition plan and the safety plan that we're doing combined together, both of those will look at those kind of facilities. Both of those are going to help make our facilities more accessible. And the money that we receive through grant programs or whatever else to develop and build those facilities, a portion of that will go to accessible elements in those facilities.
So the basic $275,000 is curbs and ramps. So we have no other money allotted anywhere for actual facilities like our city facilities at this point. And you're wanting to get those through grants? Is that what I understood? Or do we have an actual city budget for it?
That's not what I said.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure you understand.
The 275 is for the curb ramps and places that are, that's already existing.
Correct.
We have had our facilities maintenance guys go through our facilities and check for the buttons, the doors and all of those sorts of things. The transition plan will also identify that. And we will find money to do those projects because we don't anticipate they're going to be that expensive. And most of our facilities do have elements that make them accessible. I know that Ms. Chestnut did have a difficulty with our lift yesterday at the planning commission meeting.
And it was not an operation issue. It was not my issue.
We had our maintenance guys go down to evaluate that. As soon as we found out she had a problem, it was working. She just wasn't holding the button down.
No ma'am, there are no directions on it.
I'm not going to argue with you about it.
There are no directions.
But the ramp does work.
The ramp working is not the problem. It isn't, if you come up and try to use it, and that's my whole issue, this whole thing needs to be addressed. No, there were no directions and it's got two green buttons and it took four people to figure out how to get the ramp to the top of the floor. So don't tell me it was my problem. Thank you. We got other issues.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to point out that there is possible funding through tiers for ADA compliance too. So there is some additional money out there to correct problems or...
Anytime renovation is done, ADA compliance kicks in. So it's injunction with that facility, whether, now tiers is not for public facilities, it's for private facilities. But again, as we remodel and redo, all of those issues addressing ADA will be brought into the project. Brian, you're on.
Brian Kendrick, Director of Human Resources. I just wanted to say that one of the joys of working in human resources is when you find the right person to put in the right position to serve our community and as a third-generation public servant, that really gets me excited. And I can tell you that as the former ADA coordinator, you now have the right person in that position with the right passion for it, the love to do it, to serve this community. And so I just wanted to advocate for that whenever I get the opportunity.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Thank you, Brian.
Further public comment? Sharon?
Hello. My name is Sharon Troy. My address is 401 Rio Concha Drive. I'm on the ADA Advisory Committee. And early on, when they were asking people, you know, if you wanted to be a member of the committee, of course I said I did. And comments were made at a council meeting here, but I was at home at the time. And they were really pretty negative comments about Teresa. And I did let other people know how I felt about that because I totally disagreed with it. So I just want to publicly say that Teresa is very approachable. She's very qualified. And on this committee, I made a point to talk to people in the community and say, hey, I'm on this committee. Is there anything you can tell me that I can relay to the committee, you know, that would make, you know, things more accessible, easier, you know, as far as the city's, you know, facilities and whatnot. And then I would forward those to Teresa and we would talk about them during our committee meetings. And most of them, I think, have already been, they're being worked on or resolved. But one of the hardest things was getting people to tell us, you know. I mean, it's easy for people to come up and, you know, complain and, you know, and everything. Of course, San Angelo, I jumped on it when those negative comments were made about Teresa. And, but it's, you know, we need people to come up here and say, you know, I, or to let Teresa know, submit it online or on the phone, you know, hey, I had trouble using this or this would make it easier for me. And I, you know, I totally enjoy reaching out to the community to find out what can make it better, you know. All of us on the committee, either we have disabilities or we've worked with people with disabilities. And so I feel like, you know, we're a good committee, that we represent, you know, the citizens of San Angelo. And I know I email Teresa a lot with my ideas and suggestions. And one of the things I noticed is people will talk to me about Tom Green County Courthouse. And I'm like, that doesn't come under the city. And it's frustrating because I would love to be able to say, you know what, that doesn't come under the city, it comes under the county, and this is who you could contact. I would love to be able to give a name, you know, and number. And so far, I don't think there is someone designated with the county, you know, for someone like me to say, hey, call so-and-so. So I really hope that that changes and eventually we're told, you know, who can we contact at the county for things like that. But it's been a tremendous joy to me to work on this committee. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Teresa, would you make available the county person contact information so people are able to do that?
We're all thinking Lane's number.
I can make, I don't want to give out Lane's number, but I've requested a number from the county. I've not heard back from them yet. I can give you a name for SAISD. Jason Henry is the person to reach out to at SAISD. But I am still waiting for that contact person from the county. But as soon as I get it, I can make it available.
Okay, thank you. Jackie, we only allow one person. You only get to talk one time per item. So, yes.
Your rules for speaking.
All right, thank you very much. Any further public comment?
You didn't want to.
Okay, seeing none, I would ask for a motion to accept the self-assessment program and services that Teresa has just presented us.
Motion to accept.
I have a second on the table.
Well, I did that already, but I'm just confirming that we really need to do that.
Yes, we did.
Okay, good. And public comment has been made. So may we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no, hearing no nays, that motion passes 7-0. We are now going to take a break and we'll be back in 10 minutes or so. Are now moving on to item E, which is consider approving a contract to Central Square for the purchase of an updated community service module in the amount of $312,770 utilizing $346,070 from the general fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Erin, you're on.
Good morning again. Erin Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Going to present this item that really affects a number of departments and divisions in our development world in particular. It's called the Community Development Module for the software that we have. So I've got a few slides to give you some of the background. We have been working on some software upgrades in our various areas for the city. Asset Management, which is, you know, in operations and things, and Finance has been updating theirs. There is a future billing and receipts piece that's going to be coming. And our current request is for the Community Services Module. In that, again, I talked about multiple areas, but building permits, planning, engineering, fire prevention and health. And these are most of the development-related folks that are working with the private community to do development and trying to keep things together for them to go and issue them a permit or move them through a process very quickly that the city has, has made. It also has the code compliance and neighborhood services case management function. So when they go out into the field and they're working cases for whatever their reasons are, maybe it's a rehabilitation for a home, maybe it's a code compliance case, this software system keeps all of that information. At this point, I'll mention that in the caption, you've noticed there were $2 amounts. And I would just want to mention that that first dollar amount is the implementation of it. The difference between the 312 and the 346, that difference number is the hardware for our field staff to make it work in the field. So when they're in the field and it communicates back, we need those kind of at the same time because that's when we start doing our testing and implementation, it's ready to go. We do anticipate that's going to take about a 10 to 12-month implementation process, but we do realize those costs in this budget year is what we're asking, or in this funding request is what we're asking for. So our current software is from 1999. We see this just like as any tool for our team that is out there. We don't have that many 1999 vehicles, maybe in the fire department, but that's, we don't worry about them. There are currently, from the software vendors, they've been telling us this for a couple of years now, that there are no chances of updates and additions to this software suite that we have. And so we are getting further and further behind. And as other software suites within our package that manage different pieces of the city, we fall behind in our communication back and forth to those gets less and less. Again, this does that integration into one software where there's numbers of softwares being used and four of them currently that kind of bounce around. And it's challenging not only for staff, but even contractors at times. And so if we have one integrated software that helps everyone and we use it as a tool and not a hammer over the contractors, then this, this makes a better, better solution. It does allow for the full development process. And so that's been one of our sticking points as we hear back from developers is that they're ready to move forward very fast. Maybe they get started and we've issued permits or whatever the case may be, a site permit. And then we find out that there might have been an infrastructure requirement. This helps solve that. So all that information's together so that when someone's getting ready to issue something, they're able to look back and see, does anyone else have something that needs to be flagged at this moment to say, hey, we need to fix this issue? Doesn't mean the permit can't be issued, but at least we're aware of it. And that prevents maybe, if it's a single-family home in a new neighborhood, that person not being able to move in or delaying their certificate of occupancy. And a lot of times, our permits division gets blamed for that. But really, it was something in the earlier process that just wasn't communicated correctly. And this software helps us do that.
The software helps, but really it's what you put into the software, right? The information that's put in there that's...
Well, and that's one of our challenges is our land management file has not been able to be upgraded and maintained very well. This actually brings an incorporation from, all the way from Tom Green County Appraisal into our GIS system and into our land management file so that we actually have a system that keeps up with proper ownership, proper things that are going on. And so that does that as opposed to relying on someone to key in information. It's doing this automatically for us and we go back and verify. Let's see here if I'm, sorry about that. So this product would provide for a lot of efficiencies on staff time. They are, as you, as we said earlier, utilizing four different systems at time to do some multiple inputs just to get everything tracked. It is a cross-functional integration among the development team and it does help prevent delays. We, as all of you knows, delays in development at any time, particularly private development, cost dollars. And so we are wanting to continue to move development forward. And it does include live updates for inspectors in the field so that office staff not only can call them on the cell phone, they can send things to their tablets or they can, in the field, send things to the tablets. They happen to be driving by and they happen to see water leak or something. They're actually able to communicate that back to the office and say, hey, we've got an issue over here. Let's pull up the GIS maps. Let's see what size line we have and things like that. And one of the biggest things that we've, we've been hearing from customers for the last few years is that they need the ability to pay online. If we ask them to submit something online, they want to be able to pay online. And so, you know, folks that are doing development from, maybe they don't live here and they are doing it from their office, this is going to be a great solution for them. With that, I think that was my last slide. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions from council, comments from council. Tommy?
Just, just a comment. Erin, to the extent possible, there may be good reasons why, you know, we're operating, it sounds as if maybe a 1999 system. To the extent possible, just as one council member, I would appreciate you all coming to us when new updates are available to accomplish all these things that you've mentioned this will accomplish, but to stay ahead of this so that we can be more, I would say, customer responsive and citizen responsive than maybe what we have been. So if you can build these things into your, your budget year over year, for me as one council member, you know, that, that would be good.
Yeah, I believe we do, are working on a strategy for that so that all the team members are aware that each group has needs. And as you guys, I don't have to tell you guys, everybody has needs. And so it's just getting that information to everybody in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Erin?
Brendan, I've got one.
Yes, Tom?
Erin, how long have I been working on this project? I mean, how long has this been research pursued before it comes to us, before it goes fruition here?
Well, I would say the last two years, we've been doing some cursory investigation just because we know that this system that we currently have, there's not an opportunity for a lot of upgrades.
Right.
Part of our evaluation of that is where are we going to find the budget dollars to do this? As this year, as the end of this last year was going through, we started looking a little more heavy on this because we knew the asset management was moving forward. We knew the finance piece was moving forward and the billing and receipts was coming sometime this year. And if we could find funding and move together, that makes a lot more sense. We did do research and talked to, now Carrollton, the city of Carrollton. They use this system. It has been for five years. And they said it has changed their operations and made things much more easily done. Same with College Station. They also use this system down there that they do, in fact, they use the whole system, just like our city uses the whole system so that when someone comes to pay for a permit, it sends over, sends it over to budget so that they know where it needs to go as the line item. It processes it out. It sends that electronic information to them as well as prints them out a permit. And it's much more efficient for our staff and the customer.
And that's it. I think where I'm going on that, Erin, is things like this take, you know, a little bit of vision and forecast a little bit further than our skis, what we're looking at that's going to help us down the line. And I appreciate y'all finally, you know, bringing it to this point. I just need people to understand it. And there will be some that will make comments like, hey, this is great. Why didn't you do it sooner? Well, it, it takes steps. It takes finance. It takes approvals. Those things just don't come like that. Anyway, I appreciate this moving forward. I really do.
Karen?
Just a real quick comment, kind of reiterate what Tom and Tommy said. But I also say that as, as a father of somebody that works in the computer world, having a system that's almost 25 years old, software that's almost 25 years old, in this day and age does not work. So whenever you need that, come to the council. Tommy and I are going to be around for another three and a half years, Lord willing, anyway.
Speak for yourself.
The bottom line is, the bottom line is, is we want to make sure that we've got something out there that works for our customers and makes it more efficient. So thank you for bringing this up. But just remember, you've got people on, sitting up here in the dais that want to, want to make sure that we're, we're moving in that same direction all the time. Thank you.
Further public comment? All right. Then may I have a motion for approving the contract with Central Square?
Tell me.
Motion to approve. A motion by Karen, a second by Larry. Public comment? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, 7-0. Item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z23-15 to rezonate property from the heavy commercial zoning district to light manufacturing zoning district located at 1182 East Gas Plant Road. Erin, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Erin Vanoy, Assistant Again, Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. So this is at 1182 Gas Plant Road, one of our larger facilities, manufacturing facilities in our community. They have the opportunity here for this piece of property that's highlighted in red to start actually doing some manufacturing there. It just happened to be zoned heavy commercial, and so they've come forward with that zoning request. It is an area that is out in our, what we call the transitional area. You can see it's just off of Crystoville, Old Crystoville Road and Gas Plant Road. It is an industrial area. It does make a lot of sense that they are going to be doing some chemical mixing out for different service areas around our community and our region. So this did go to the planning commission. They looked at it and discussed it. They felt very confident that this is an appropriate area and approved seven to zero. City staff is recommending approval as well to change this from the heavy commercial to the light manufacturing district for that 10.257 acres.
It would seem to make sense if people would be more in favor of light manufacturing versus heavy commercial, so conceptually, that sounds like the right direction to take. So I'm going to ask council if they have questions or comments on this item. A motion for approval, a second by Tommy. Public comment, please. Those jingle bells are really disturbing. No.
You need to start singing, Karen.
We'll start singing here in a minute. Michael Looney, VP of Economic Development, San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, wanted to thank you for examining this issue. The company that owns this property is Allen's Transport ATL. Their headquarters is in La Duce, Canada, which is just to the south, near the airport, just south of the airport in Edmonton. This is a company that collectively we've all worked on, on recruiting. They landed on the Gas Plant Road property two years ago. They have positioned themselves within the marketplace to take advantage of several new contracts that are on a very short timeline. They need to react quickly. This transition to the new zoning would allow them to do that very rapidly. The company is in a hiring mode. They're doing very well. They're very pleased with what they found in San Angelo from a workforce standpoint. They do have a lot of heavy equipment that is inbound, that doesn't necessarily require this zoning, but it certainly does help because they're going to be doing some manufacturing on the site. They do have a very large contract exclusively with a company based in Texas for the distribution of a very specialized chemical, a DRA, a drag-reducing agent, and just wanted to come up and lend my support to this effort, and thank you all for considering it.
Further public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven, zero. We'll now move into item G, our discussion, direction, and possible action on the following. One, amendments to Section 406, bed and breakfast establishments and short-term rentals of the zoning ordinance. Two, consider a resolution calling a joint public hearing of city council and the planning commission regarding amendments to Section 406, bed and breakfast and short-term rentals of the zoning ordinance, and establishing alternative notice procedures. Aaron, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. This is an item that y'all may have requested, I want to say maybe midsummer, to start looking at some of the rules, particularly a 500-foot separation for elementary and public schools, and secondary public schools, and so we'll get to that in just a moment. Through this process, we've had a great staff team and the planning commission working back and forth to come forward with these ideas. And so that's what we want to talk about today, is have a discussion about the ideas, and then the thing that we're going to really ask for action is to set a joint meeting in January to bring the ideas to fruition in an ordinance form and move it forward. So this is a time for us to clean up some things in our short-term rental ordinance. There are some things in there that we worked with our legal department very strongly with, to them to advise us on how we should do things based on some court hearings and things that are out there. One of the things that we found that was a little odd in our system, that we said we referred to a license required, but we've really never issued a license, and so we've changed that language to be a conditional use. A conditional use is a land use designation, so it goes with the land, and so that's really a planning term. The second bullet point, talking with our team that worked on this together, it's been very clear that the intent is to protect our single-family zoning and low residential zoning areas via a conditional use. And so you see those RS1, which is single-family, RS2, which is single-family and two-family, which means single-family or duplexes, and RS3 could be zero lot line, townhomes, twin homes, things like that. And then our ranch and estate, our R and E areas, will all require a conditional use. So in addition to that conditional use, all of those properties will have a 500-foot separation between properties, and that's measured from closest property line to closest property line of whichever properties are looking to become a short-term rental through the conditional use process. We have also made, under line one, that 500-foot separation between the properties, we have also added in the ordinance that is not a variable distance, that they could not seek a variance for that. So be thinking about that as for your discussions and directions moving forward. The second item under there is that 500-foot separation from public schools, and we did say elementary and secondary public schools, and we did try to make a designation of a part of the school that's being used by the children and faculty. So if it's maybe a maintenance barn somewhere on the property that's a long way away, we probably wouldn't count that. We're going to count the most-used building. Now, I think we can have some discussion there of how do we want to look at those? Our recommendation is, what is our greatest concern? And protecting these students and folks that are there on campus, being dropped off, being picked up, walking home from school, things like that. So just be thinking of that. Again, that 500-foot separation from whatever that property line from that school is, would not be optional for a variance to the zoning board of adjustment.
When you say public schools, what about charter schools? What about religious schools? What, I mean...
We've been kind of given the direction for public schools. Now, some charter schools do receive tax dollars, and I might lean towards Teresa to help me answer this, but usually we look at those, those that are receiving tax dollars as a public school, those that only receive private funding are a private school. I do think it's up for a question of how we want to look at it. One of our biggest challenges from the staff side is identifying what is a private school and where are they located at.
And not missing one.
And not missing one.
If it's small or something, but it's more easier to identify a public school and where it is. Not that it couldn't be done, but it's...
It would just seem to me that you should not limit it to public schools, but you should limit it to all educational schools. I don't know how you define that, but I think any institution that offers schooling, education should be inclusive in this conversation. Just one comment.
I was going to say, especially, Mayor, because you're doing this for the protection of the children as well.
Yeah.
So regardless of whether they're a public school or a private school, they're children, and we're trying to protect them no matter what.
Very good.
Go ahead.
If this is a point to discuss this, I'll throw a comment. So a lot of people can throw up a church and a school within a church. I would hate to own a piece of property and then somebody have a church school that they suddenly put into place within 500 feet. I mean, that's some concern there. Another one, my question on the 500-feet separation between properties is, if I'm an investor and I want to make a row of short-term rentals, if I bought an acre or two and I wanted to make them all SDRs in a proper, this would kind of kick that out of the system, would it not? I mean, if you were one property owner and you had five of them side by side that you were going to manage, this would kind of throw up a flag, would it not?
Yes, if they are all on one lot, then it might be possible, but if they're separate lots...
Well, what if you own several lots?
If there's several lots, then that zoning district is going to take precedence. So it could be something they need to find properties that are in a zoning district that would remove that 500-foot separation.
Name that district. What would be an example?
So would that be a variance?
That would not be a variance, and so the way, if you look at number two, it only applies to those four categories, RS1, RS2, RS3, and R and E that have the separation distances. Number three, if you look at general commercial, general commercial, heavy commercial, office warehouse, office commercial, neighborhood commercial, heavy commercial, light manufactured, heavy manufactured, as well as R and M, which is low-rise multifamily, like the project that was looked at today. And then, which is RM1 and RM2 is high-rise. And so there are places in our neighborhoods that are zoned RM1 that could have multiple properties side by side if they chose to, because RM1 allows a varied structure type. It can be all the way from a single-family home all the way to an apartment complex. So there are some opportunities there, but they would be very limited in scope based on where our zoning district is.
Well, and so what I'm concerned about, I've got a constituent right up not far from the rodeo crossing the grounds in the Cowboy Church, and that person already has two that are side by side.
Yes.
And I don't know, I haven't looked at the plat or the lot, but this becomes an immediate concern, is it's a great place to have it because it's got cushion between them and any other existing or close neighborhood. It's a good spot if they put two or three of those in, but I'm, in my lack of knowledge in this area, I'm going to default to you of saying, are those people protected versus something we do today?
They would have protections moving forward because if they're in existence today and are following the rules today, I don't like this word, but they basically get to grandfather their status until they change, they choose to change for some reason, and then that may make them have to come into compliance for some other reason.
Okay.
There's other options, as I mentioned, the one lot. So we've been approached by different folks of, well, how do I do this? So the way the ordinance talks about is if you're all on one lot, and if you think about other communities that may have these or maybe out in the country, they're one large lot, but they may have five cabins, and that's all a short-term rental. That's one short-term rental entity as opposed to five separate ones. Now, that changes, hey, I'm going to maybe replat my lot into one lot or something like that, but there are some other processes that allows that to happen. But the biggest item is, what is the zoning for that area?
And just to reiterate, he says, those are for ones that are operating today legally, not operating today. Legally operating today. Legally. Legally.
Well, so to Tom's point, okay, so I have a big piece of property. I'm going to put five cabins on it, and because the cabins will be used primarily, let's say, if it was out at Lake Nazworthy for weekends at a time, would that be allowable? And I use Lake Nazworthy, but it could be...
But that's a good example.
It's a good example.
Don't you have to first, Aaron, wouldn't you have to first look at the base, underlying zoning to be able to answer the mayor's question?
Yes, and most of our property out at the lake is RS1. There's a few R and E, there's a little bit of R and M, but in some commercial, but if it's RS1...
If there's a few R and M, then we've got to talk about it.
Yeah, correct.
Because if there's just one, it's still got to be talked about.
So within the actual language, it's not only the limitation of the zoning, but then it starts limiting how many bedrooms. And I want to say it is limited to five bedrooms, and so we would have to determine and make an interpretation, does each cabin is that one bedroom? And so then that limits the volume of people that can be there. Because I know that's maybe your concern that you're pointing at is, well, if I have a two-acre piece of property and I put 25 of these out there, am I okay? And then you're adding the volume of traffic and potential noise and things like that. And so I think that's a consideration when we look at this ordinance language, what are the protections we're wanting to do, not only for short-term rentals, but for the other private property owners around.
Tommy, I know you had some questions.
Aaron, you didn't mention childcare facilities. How does that play into the 500 feet?
We have asked that question, and the thought process now with the group that's been discussing this is, again, does that mean that somebody runs one out of a house that we don't know about? And so the decision, as our recommendation coming forward for the discussion, is that we would not have those included, because it simply puts staff in a position to make a significant mistake and give somebody a conditional use through a process, and then we find out somebody's operating a daycare, and it's very problematic. It's very hard.
They don't have to register with, I mean, that's something that the city does not track, so it'd be very difficult for the staff to be able to catch all of those and know there was a child. I mean, that's where the public schools versus private schools, also where I was going. Don't set the staff up with so many things that become very difficult for them to catch.
One step, going down the rabbit hole a little bit further, if it is advertised and signed, there is signage identifying this location as a childcare facility, but it still might be in a neighborhood. I can think of at least one over in the Santa Rita area that has been there a long time, but it is in a residential neighborhood. How would the 500 feet apply in that situation?
It would be grandfathered, but what happens if someone wants to open up a new one?
Yes, the new one, yeah. If somebody, two houses down, could they open it up from...
Currently, the way we have it written, yes, they would be allowed to apply for a conditional use. Now, conditional use is a discretionary decision by the planning commission, and that's where the staff works with the applicant to say, here's why it's a good idea, or here's why it's a bad idea. And maybe that's a criteria of us making sure that the planning commission knows what is around, and we've identified that, and they make the best decision they can. At that point, there, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, there's always an appeal process that could come before this board or this council and say, okay, what makes sense there? Now, I don't like creating additional processes to solve an issue. How can we write the ordinance to solve the issue? But I think that is something to consider and something for us to discuss further if that's...
It may be worthwhile, this would be work, but it may be worthwhile to identify those that are known, current childcare facilities, just to have that information. Y'all may have that already, that are known to be operating as a childcare facility. Just so, if nothing, we know where they are at least, and then if this did ever come up, then you all would have the information in order to have that discussion you just referenced with the applicant. Just a thought.
Let me ask another question. Describe what 500 feet looks like. Is it a block? Is it half of a block? Is it two blocks? What's 500 feet?
It is property line to property line, so anywhere on that property, even at the back alley or the corner there, so it is a 500-foot buffer around that property. Whatever the shape of that property is, it's that 500 feet. So it doesn't matter if it's linear, straight down the block or the block behind you, it is a buffer, and we are working with our GIS department to build those buffers around the known properties so that when somebody looks at the map, they know where that buffer is.
Mayor, I just found some common examples for you.
That's what I want.
Half the Eiffel Tower, two Boeing 777s, five garden hoses, or 11 school buses. That's 500 feet.
That's what I needed, was that explanation. Because when you say 500 feet, you're like, well, how much protection is that?
Haven't been to the Eiffel Tower, so I wasn't aware that that was...
It's one and a third football fields.
Yes.
There you go.
To Aaron's point too, and really to the heart of your question, I think, Mayor, he referenced it, is it actually linear feet, or is it shh, 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 shh?
No.
No, it's not.
Right. It is the direct line of sight, or as Rick says, as the squirrel runs.
No, I said as the crow flies, not as the squirrel runs.
Because those squirrels are all over the place.
Don't, Aaron, I wanted to be the one to say that.
My next question would be based off of the language that we're talking about and we're asking to have added to this for conversation, is with the previous cities passing STR regulations, Teresa, do you see these suggestions as potential problems as we move down the road? Because we know a lot of lawsuits have been filed against cities who have passed short-term rental ordinances.
Yeah, and we tailored this ordinance to comply with those cases that regulate us right now, which is primarily a case out of Austin. There's a lot of cases from other court jurisdictions that are kind of informative, but they're really not binding on us. So this does meet the regulations that we're under right now, but I can't say that protects us from any kind of liability because this is a very hot... us from any kind of liability, because these, this is a very hot topic for litigation. And the way that you get sued is you enter into a new, um, provision that nobody else has done. I keep hoping the Supreme Court will look at these jurisdictions, who have all these different rules, and make a decision. Um, they kind of look at the cases, and so far have declined to do that. So we're hoping to have some Supreme Court jurisdiction, Texas Supreme Court, um, decision-making ability and some guidance, or this comes up in the legislature in every session, it gets closer to just allowing these by right. So we'll see. But for now, I think this is the best we can do to protect ourselves.
Uh, Karen.
Is it correct that the language states in the ordinance, um, because you, you don't want to be vulnerable to interpretation, I think is what I'm gathering from Teresa's comment, and this will continue to be a contentious topic for citizens and city governments, uh, probably into the indefinite future. No matter how great the new ordinance is, there will still be questions and concerns. But doesn't the ordinance currently state that where, um, restrictions are in place on land use, the more restrictive shall apply? Meaning, if there's a question, um, several examples have been given, then the department and the planning commission will choose the most restrictive solution?
No, I think that's a misinterpretation of what our ordinance says. We have a conflicts of law provision within our code, and what that says is that the more restrictive or imposing the higher standard, uh, standards shall govern. The zoning ordinance is not intended to plant or replace private deed restrictions or covenants. So what it's saying is that if you have, if we give you authority to do something, and we've seen this in other cases, if we give you some authority to do something, but you have a deed restriction that's more restrictive than what we said, you still have to abide by the deed restriction. And the same thing goes the other way. If you have a deed restriction that says it's perfectly okay to have STRs on your property, but we say no, then we're the ones who govern. So whichever is more restrictive.
Thank you. Uh, so what, how can you apply what you just explained to us to an entire development with published deed restrictions? Did I say that right?
No.
Uh, because we frequently hear about neighborhoods, Tom has some, I have some, um, that are older neighborhoods, no deed restrictions are on those neighborhoods, and they feel particularly vulnerable. But there are other parts of town where there are clearly stated deed restrictions, and I think the public believes that those are protective. If they don't want to live with STRs, then they don't have to, but maybe that's not the case.
Well, may I ask, okay, let me ask this, Teresa. Okay, so if I lease to someone for 31 days, not 30 days, am I an STR?
No. So back to Karen's point, that those are protective, they are protective, but it's not the cities to enforce. All that we can enforce are the rules that we put upon properties. So if you have a deed restriction on your property, and Lucy decides to put an STR as your neighbor next to you, then you can sue Lucy because she's violating that private covenant between you. The city doesn't have a role in that, and it's not appropriate for us to have a role in that. Those are unique community restrictions that, quite frankly, communities can be more stringent than we as a city can be. Um, I think the other component of this is the discussion about, um, whether or not those deed restrictions can prohibit STRs, has been decided by the Supreme Court. And they said two things regarding that. One, um, STRs are not commercial. This is a residential use, really, uh, use, just the same as if, um, I leased my property for 31 days, that's considered residential use. So they're not viewed as commercial enterprises by the Supreme Court. So the court, the deed restriction would have to be very specific in saying, you are not allowed to have this particular residential use for it to apply. We have deed restrictions throughout the community, some are racially discriminatory, some are just no longer relevant. All of those are for private individuals to deal with. We don't get involved in that, and I would highly advise that we don't, because it opens us up to even more litigation for interpreting a situation that we're not even involved in.
What is the ruling on subletting? So if I choose to lease a project for 31 days, but I sublet to someone for one week, is that legal?
I think the subletting would be, for the one week, would constitute operating that as an STR, and I know there are a number of operators who do go back and forth. If they can find a long-term lease, they do that. If they can't, then they, they put it on the list, and they, you know, rent it for the night, or the weekend, or whatever. Um, the way we're looking at it, I believe, is if you have a period of time where you're leasing it for less than 30 days, you have to comply with our STR requirements.
Yes.
Yeah, this is such a tough conversation to have, because on one hand, I'm a big believer in private property rights. I think that's a huge, um, issue. On the other hand, I'm very protective of a neighborhood, and believe that people move into neighborhoods because they want to know the neighbor, and want to know who's in the neighborhood, and, and select certain areas based off of what they want their, their family, um, neighborhood to be. So it's, it's very, um, a challenging conversation, and even to the point of subletting for 31 days, um, doesn't constitute an STR based off of the issues that Tommy brings up, Tom brings up, Karen brings up. I think what we really need to do, in my mind, is add as much commentary to this issue as possible, before we take any kind of motion or movement on it. I don't think today's conversation should be the only conversation, um, had on this issue. It's, short-term rentals are part of the new world that we live in, and we really want to make sure that we, as a city, support the short-term rentals as long as it protects the neighborhood, and at the same point in time, understand what private property rights are all about. It's very complicated. It's going to be very emotional. It's going to be, um, I know you've put a lot of work into it, but I think we've brought up several issues today.
Mm-hmm.
That add to that conversation, including defining a public school versus all schools, elementary schools, or schools of education, regardless of whether they're private, public, or church. Um, those are just some of the issues, and then Tom's issue of if I buy, have a big piece of land, and I put five cabins on it, what's the language on that? Uh, Karen's points, which, um, were valid points. So if council.
And Mayor, if I may, I have a couple of other slides, just to talk about.
Oh, please, sorry.
How we're talking about process changes, too. Because that is also something we hear from our STR operators, of can we get some process changes? Because it's been, at times, challenging for them to come in compliance, and much easier for them just to operate without following the rules. And so we want to make something that makes sense for both. So really, this slide talks about where. And so you've got that question of where, and how do we determine where? This slide is more about how do we work through the process to help them get there? So through some of the court cases, that number one up there, uh, they basically have said that you can't limit it based on the size of the road, and you can't limit outdoor gatherings on these properties. Because if you can have, basically, a family reunion at your house that may have 30, 40 people, why would you treat a short-term rental any different, is how the, the courts kind of see it. We have shortened, or we will ask to shorten, to the appeal period, and that's really just to get the process moving forward. A 30-day appeal period for this is, is, uh, it seems to just drag it out, and then you have those others that may be, if we have a distance separation, trying to apply, now they need to wait. And so it's really putting a backlog on getting this, these processed, uh, the ones that actually meet the criteria. One of the things that we are doing is providing a revocation process of the conditional use through the planning commission, based on a criteria that would be in the ordinance, failure to pay your hot taxes, failure to do certain things, you failed your inspection, you had too many code complaints, or SAPD complaints that turned to be valid complaints. We would be able to bring towards the planning commission, we want to revoke that conditional use for that property. And so it would remove that ability for that property to have a conditional use at that time. Any questions on this slide before I move forward? So this is where, Mayor, as you're talking about, um, we did earlier propose that, um, having a resolution in a joint meeting in January, if we do think that's a little premature, the question would be, do we want to have the joint meeting with planning commission just to discuss? The big thing goes back to notices to our community of a joint meeting, because we are set by certain things that we have to notice a prop, a certain way, for an item like this that impacts changes in several zoning districts, or a zoning district like RS1, or something of that nature. And so we have to notify a specific way. So if we feel like this is to delay, we, we need to know that, so that we don't send out notices, and we have to do this multiple times.
My gut instinct is delay. I think that's too preliminary, or too soon. I do believe the other thing that I didn't mention earlier, but is Tommy's comment about, um, childcare facilities, which hasn't been inclusive in here, and I think that has to be a subject to be discussed further, and look at what rules and regulations might apply there. But I think requesting this in January is too early.
Okay.
I think there's still a lot of work to be done on it, and a lot of additional conversation and clarification, in my opinion. And I would ask counsel to, um, say what they say. Harry, did you have a comment earlier you wanted to make?
Yes, I did. Uh, you know, we've been dealing with short-term rentals in San Angelo about seven or eight years. When I first came on council in 2016, we, we talked about it, and then started through this. So it's time to revisit this and bring these, bring the ordinance up to where it needs to be. Now, whether we vote on this as it is today, or we push it till we get some more information, makes no difference to me, but we've got to do something with it. We can't keep it the way it is.
I would like this, um, information to be updated, based off of our conversation today, be brought back to us at the January 16th meeting, and then we'll decide what action to take going from there, if, if council agrees.
I would like to clarify, y'all need to tell us specifically what you want us to bring back.
The things we just discussed as part of that ordinance.
So where I would go with that is, um, adjacent STR properties that share lot lines or share property lines specifically, is I think how, how I would phrase that.
Multiple properties.
And whether they would be inclusive of falling under this or not.
Meaning multiple, multiple cabins.
Multiple STRs.
On a single lot.
Teresa, let me, let me go down a different rabbit, rabbit trail. There's, uh, I know there's a lot of, um, legal activity in Dallas over their STR ordinance, and I think there's been an injunction, whatever. Maybe a delay on our part would help us a bit. It's not going to give us clarity, but it might help us a bit to see where that case goes, um, before we move, move forward, so.
That case specifically is about no STRs. They voted, the council voted no STRs in a residential area, only in commercial areas, and that's the basis for that lawsuit.
Yes, and the injunction just said the city can't enforce their ordinance until the other issues are resolved. Um, the issue with the Dallas case is that's not our jurisdiction, as far as courts are concerned. We're really under the Austin cases, and that series of cases, which we're watching to see if there's any decisions made on that, but, um, that hasn't been done. The other concern I have about continuing to push it completely is that we do have things that we know we, we're not enforcing, because we cannot enforce them under the Austin case. So the number of people, I think the road width might be another one. So there's a few things like that, that the Austin case explicitly said we cannot enforce. So even though it's on the books, we don't hold people to those things. So at the very least, we want to get those, um, cleaned up at some point in the near future.
Would it be possible to clean up that which, in your determination, planning department, legal department, needs to be cleaned up for the current state of operations, to go ahead and bring that to us? Let us address those, make a decision on those, and then some of these other things that may need further discussion with the planning commission, then we do that, maybe in February. That, just a thought.
We can certainly look into that and work with our legal team to see what's the right path to take. If we're just simply striking some text, that might be one path, and then we come forward with the, here's the real revisions, but I'll, I'll take their advice on where we can move forward with that.
I would be open to that.
I think we also want to avoid having to have multiple meetings with the planning commission, so we have to call that joint meeting. So I would encourage you to just do that once. It's kind of hard to assemble everyone, so if we need to hunt and, and bring that all together.
I think we do, Rick. I think we don't want multiple meetings to do it. We want it, based off what Tommy said, what other city council members have offered. Get all that together.
Okay, I'll go over the items that I have listed, and I also have one question. Do you want all of these items that was listed reviewed by the planning commission before it comes back to you?
I think it should be.
Okay, so that next planning commission meeting's not till?
It is after your January meeting, so you would not hear it in January.
That means it's going to push you even farther.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they've been, have been involved and have offered a lot of input, so I don't think we should be asking for change without it going to them for review and conversation.
So what we'll take to them, unless I've missed one, and y'all tell me if I've got this right or wrong, but one is the item pertaining to multiple cabins or such on a, on a property. How is that treated? Or is, we'll explain whether that's allowed, or whether other guidelines prohibit or allow that, and what their opinion is. The next is to potentially include, uh, private schools as well as public schools. The next is whether they want to include.
Including churches, churches that have schools, right?
That would be a private school.
Okay.
So, public or private school. And the next is whether or not they want to include childcare facilities. Is that one y'all, okay for them to talk about? And then the last one is anything pertaining to deed restrictions. Do we want that one? Did I miss anything? Those are the four?
Well, I think mine, just to be clear, was, it didn't matter if they were all on one property, they, they could be several adjacent properties in a row. I mean, somebody could have five or six lots that are adjacent.
I think that'll most likely be already governed by, if they're allowed by right, and there's not, they're not in a, in a, in a zoning area that requires 500 feet, then yes, you could. But if they're 500-feet requirement, and the person just happens to own multiple lots, then that would not be allowed, because they'd have to have the 500-foot separation between one STR and the next. I think that.
I don't know if I'm good with that, but anyway, you have the gist of what I'm asking for.
Yeah, you'd have to totally change the 500-foot requirement in that zoning thing to allow, okay, Rick bought six lots in a row, and so I can have six just because I'm the same owner. I think that, from what I would see, would defeat the spirit of what initially was trying to be done, to making them 500 feet apart, unless it's in a allowed-by-right area.
Karen.
We can talk, but.
Just confirming that code compliance and enforcement is not part of today's conversation. It'll be part of the conversation with the planning commission when we meet.
Well, and so we can, we can just briefly touch on that, but, you know, at this point, the city doesn't have, you know, we operate on a complaint basis, basically with code compliance, and so we don't have anyone who's doing that, who's going out looking for these or enforcing that. Finance has done a good job of trying to look at, you know, who's paying hot taxes, get those things done, but that will be something that y'all will need to consider, and possibly we'll talk about in January at y'all's work session, but if, if we want enforcement in this area, that means we're really going to have to bring on staff to help do those things.
I don't think we use code compliance in that sense, just as we don't today put, ask that code compliance drive around every neighborhood and write down the issues that, you know, it is phone call related, right? It's not.
Correct, that's typically how it's done now.
And I don't think we should be asking our code compliance people to be in this management of this issue unless there is a complaint, just like it is for them on all other issues.
The complaints we got, like at the meeting, at the planning commission meeting, were that there are all these ones operating out there, um, this guy spoke and said, you know, why should I be in compliance when there's 40 others? Why do I bother if you're not going to enforce? So those are the, the concerns, and, and where you put it is, could be decided, but I, I just want everybody to know, just STRs in general, the planning staff is, is low as it is now, and the volume of these coming through and enforcing is something our staff really doesn't have the, the.
But every citizen has the right to ask for code compliance on those issues. So if you suspect someone is operating a short-term rental, you have the right to call and, and report it. Everyone has that right, and then it's our obligation to go out and seek the information in terms of whether it's valid or not.
That's correct. And, and that, what I was basically just trying to say is that enforcing in that manner, we currently don't have the staff to do that. They're, they're not covering well code complaints coming in, in general. So anyway, just food for thought for y'all later.
Further, yes, Lucy.
I just wanted to ask, does this include as well as the, like for traffic? You know, I know we've always had good questions about, the streets are too narrow or there's no way out, just one way in. Are we going to do any of that? Are we going to put that in any kind of ordinance or we're just?
Well, this really is just a land use ordinance. It really doesn't address all of that thoroughfare stuff. And so there've been a case that says you can't restrict the width of road. That would be some evidence that we may be able to provide to Planning Commission when they make their discretionary decision on a conditional use for short-term rental. We do require them to provide adequate parking and things like that. And so there are some options for them, but I don't know that it would improve those areas that are maybe not quite up to our standards. But it should be something we could look at in the decision process of the conditional use, because that's really important, is why do they approve and why do they disapprove?
Exactly.
Usually that's because of citizens around says, we don't want this, or a distance-related thing. Rarely is it infrastructure, parking, roadways. That may be a complaint and a complaint to code compliance if it gets to that point. But this really does not address that aspect of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I do want to clarify, though, that the Austin case is pretty clear, that if that's the only basis for denial, then that's not going to be upheld. That's why we're taking it out of our ordinance as a consideration for them. And people can come up and complain about that, but we can't regulate solely on the road is too narrow. The court's reasoning is if it's wide enough for a house, it's wide enough for an STR.
Thank you.
Further comments before we move on? Okay, that's-
Well, thank y'all for that direction and discussion. I think that's very helpful for city staff. I know some of the staff members that have been working on this are here, have been taking notes, and so we look forward to bringing back information for you.
Thanks to all of y'all, Erin, for the hard work.
This is highly emotional and subject to a lot of criticism on all parts, so thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
We will need formal action because it is considering a resolution.
Okay.
So if someone can make a motion to deny the resolution, calling the joint meeting in January?
Motion to deny the meeting in January.
Right.
Second. Second, motion by Tom, seconded by Tommy, public comment. With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Tina, you are on. First reading of public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30 of 2024 for capital projects.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a budget for the debt that City Council approved back in September of 2023. The short-term debt amount was in 1.875 million dollars, and Public Works is proposing to use this short-term debt revenue for street rehab projects, specifically resurfacing of A&amp;M Avenue in North Chadburn.
Questions for Tina on this item?
None.
Okay. With that, may I have approval for the budget amendment for-
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any public comment?
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
I had several questions from constituents about North Chadburn specifically and their concern with the start date of January 1, how that would affect the rodeo and stock show. And would you like to provide the answer?
I think Shane Kelton, yeah, so Patrick, he described that last time, so in our last meeting, he was very, he gave a great strategy for how we were going to manage this.
But I'm more than willing to reiterate that again, just so the public knows. We are very aware of the stock show and the rodeo season is coming upon us, and with the North Chadburn Street directly impacting that facility there, we did make a conscientious effort to work with the contractor in order to accommodate those two events. So what's going to be happening is Reese Albert is going to start the prep work in January, lowering valves and manhole covers for that. We'll have all of that leveled back up, infirmed up for the stock show. We're going to stop construction during the stock show so we don't impede that traffic. As soon as the stock show is done, they're going to be mobilizing in two FDR crews and get the street torn up, put back down, and repaved and restripped in time for the rodeo. So that's our goal. We do have a contingency plan if weather comes into play to where we can work north to south and get those, that street that's closest to the Coliseum in place for the rodeo. So we're very, very well aware of it. We are going to monitor it closely and make sure that we still have successful events there and still get Chadburn Street taken care of like everybody hope we will do it done.
Thank you for your reassurances to the public.
No problem.
Patrick, maybe you can take that letter that you sent to Justin and Kermit and forward it all out to all the councils so they have it.
I can do that.
Cool.
Great idea. Okay. With that, remind me, did we take a vote on that? So we need a vote on that. So motion, a second, public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Our last item is consider approving a contract with the San Angelo Destination Marketing Organization, DMO, allocating hotel occupancy tax receipts to be used for eligible activities and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all redated, related documents. This is a contract conversation only. Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Dane, Assistant City Manager. As you're aware, we're coming to the end of 2023, which means we're coming to the end of the contract year associated with the DMO CVB function that we contract for with the Chamber of Commerce. In preparation for renewal, possible renewal of that DMO CVB contract, we have had a few meetings informally, but we put together a big meeting for Friday morning. President at that meeting was the mayor, Tom Thompson, Daniel, Walt from the Chamber, Chris Evatt, Jeremy, our new DMO CVB Vice President, Tina, and I. In that meeting, we discussed the terms of the old contract and what we'd like to see in the new contract. And so today, our purpose is to revisit those key terms that we were in agreement on Friday and get your buy-in and your direction to authorize Daniel to negotiate and execute a contract consistent with these terms. Marketing plan. We want to work into the contract a requirement to develop and utilize a marketing plan. And so we talked about a joint process for that development, having stakeholders in the room and developing a plan which would guide the actions of the chamber personnel. And we had agreement on that. Everybody agreed on that. We wanted to update the performance benchmarks. Recall that the performance benchmarks that exist in the current contract, the 2023 contract, are very much oriented around last year versus this year, some very baseline kind of measurements that compare the two years and are then utilized, that comparison or the result of that comparison is utilized in the determination of whether or not the chamber DMO CVB function is entitled to additional payments. We wanted a little more specific in there, and we put together a list of specifics that we'd like included. All but just a few of those were acceptable to the chamber folks, and so all but a few of those are what we agreed on the other day.
All but one?
That one-
It was not few, it was one.
Converted to sales item, that number four C. Okay, we're good.
And that was to be discussed again?
It could be, right, it could be-
But was not able to sign up on how we would do that today.
So we feel good about an updated set of performance benchmarks. And again, everybody agreed to those items, with the exception of that one line. Contract amount, $950,000, one sum without the additional complication of additional payments to be earned if certain benchmarks are met.
No, we didn't discuss additional income based off of benchmarks.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
No additional.
Just making sure.
And the key is the contracts for a certain amount with certain things to be, certain actions to be performed with the desire that certain results are achieved. And so even though the additional payments are not contemplated in the contract, we still have those performance benchmarks in there or performance efforts in there that we want to, we want the committee to be able to look at. Payments to the chamber. One of the things that is a little bit, is more, we think more complicated than necessary in the current agreement, is the computation of fund balance to be retained versus clawed back to the city unused numbers. What we've come up with is a simplified methodology in that there's no routine fund balance kept by them. There are two small performance funds of $40,000 each, which they retain, but no operating fund balance. That operating fund balance for this kind of organization would be to facilitate cash flow. In exchange for that, what we've proposed and what they agreed to was at the beginning of the year, a nine, a payment equal to nine months' worth of activity. So they would have those first nine months in that first payment. And that eliminates the cash flow issues associated with maintaining a fund balance. And then a three-month payment for us after that, and for us, that's important because they fall for us in separate fiscal years. And so that, we think that that methodology simplifies that fund balance section of the contract, and everybody agreed to that. Quarterly meetings where this little review and steering group meets, quarterly financial reports where they provide financials on a quarterly basis, quarterly reports to council, that will continue. One additional provision that was discussed during the budget process that we're going to put in here, that Walt thought would have been not a problem, was recall that they had a key position vacant for multiple months during the year. And one of the discussion items was that we would like that clawback to be not less than eight months of the previous director's salary. And so we're going to work a term in there that says the clawback shall not be, for the 2023 year, shall not be less than eight months of that salary. And Walt didn't think that would be a problem either. And so those are the key items that I have noted. Tom and Mayor, Daniel, do you recall any additional items that you think we discussed that'd be important for council to hear about?
That was a very thorough presentation in terms of what was discussed and what everyone agreed to in terms of a way to move forward and to produce the best possible results from the hot tax money investment into heads in beds, which is a key component in terms of performance level. And the other issue was the making sure that we understood the actual impact of actions taken by the CVB in terms of putting heads in beds. Which ones did they actually deliver heads in beds? And that's all part of those issues that you just discussed.
Well, one of my objectives was to work the administrative folks as much out of the process as possible so we could focus on this, this relationship of inputs versus results and really think about how the DMO CVB function stimulates activity locally and not spend a lot of time worrying about administrative functions.
Daniel?
Now, I think Mike did a wonderful job summarizing the discussion that we did have. We all are not the details, as you mentioned, given the city council, I mean, the city manager, the authority to negotiate the contract itself. But there are certain details, we did talk about the criteria that was acceptable to us. There's that one that we talked about, that we do need to kind of get a little bit of expertise from the DMO and CVB as far as what that could look like. I'd like to take a look at a discussion with Jeremy, what they're proposing to see how that goes into the contract. But other than that, Mike, you know that you covered all the different points, so thank you.
Thank you. Additionally, we did have a preliminary meeting with the city attorney to see if anything we discussed was crazy or was going to be very difficult to paper up and put into a contract. She felt like we were, what we had talked about was probably achievable.
Do I have questions or comments from council? May I have a motion for approval, approving a contract for Daniel to negotiate and execute?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Karen, seconded by Lucy. Public comment?
So Brendan, I'll just jump into public. I've sat in some of those meetings, and I'll just say, the meeting we had Friday was the best meeting we've ever had as far as putting people around the table, coming to a joint consensus and opinion all the way through. And I left there very positive and feeling very, you know, confident on, this kind of defines how we're going to go forward, and I thought everything just worked out as best as could be expected. So I applaud y'all for the vote. I think it was a very good job.
Thank you. Public comment? There was none, I saw none, so let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed 7-0. We are now going to go into closed session. We have lunch.
We do, yes, ma'am.
Executive session under provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. A, Section 551.087, Economic Development Negotiations Regarding Project Best. Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Risk Management Claims. And Section C, 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Public Art Commission Decision. With that, we are adjourned for the closed session. We will return once business is concluded. Act to order at 1:07 PM. From our executive session, there are no items to be announced following that executive session, so we'll move on to Item B, which is consider approving various board nominations. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, C Rangel, SMD II, and DJ Wilde, SMD V, to a second term. Benjamin Brodjkowski, SMD VI, to a first term, all ending December 2025. And then to the Civic Events Advisory Board, John Flynn, SMD I, and Josh Hilton, SMD II, both to a first term ending December 2025. May I have a motion to approve Item B? So move by-
Say, Harry.
Harry, seconded by Larry. And public comment, since there's no public here, we will not take public comment. And so we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 6-0. Announcements or consideration of future agenda items. Just have a great Merry Christmas. Let's welcome the new year and look forward to all the great things we're going to do together in 2024.
Do we want to try to schedule that strategic planning meeting?
No.
Okay.
Because we've already said we're not with COTDC, they're going to come back, right?
I think it's a different one.
Daniel, do you want to, Daniel, did you want to schedule the strategic planning?
For what?
Strategic workshop, Mayor, the priority sitting workshop. Talked about starting in January.
Oh, no.
So we can have discussions about what we need to do as far as revenues moving forward into the future, into this fiscal year.
Okay.
Those discussions were had, so I just want to make sure that we get that scheduled for January.
Okay.
There's some dates on there? At the end of the, at the end of the month, 23rd is a Tuesday, 26th is a Friday, the 30th is a Tuesday as well.
I don't have my calendar signed, I'm going to-
Hand it to the mayor, please, sir.
Nope. Okay.
So that whole week, I have looked at being out of town. Except, but I mean, I leave out, as I tell Heather when they make those. I usually leave on Monday and try to make sure I'm back for Friday.
So the 26th would be the-
26th?
Be the only date we could consider.
I'm cool with that, I'll just make sure I'm here.
Okay, we'll make that the 26th of January.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
With that announcement, adjournment-
Move adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that a Friday, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.